Good morning, everyone. The time is 8:02 a.m. It is Saturday, May 31st. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Heiser. Rizzo.
Present.
Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, six members are present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up is reports and presentation. Receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff feedback regarding city's strategic plan and core values update. Mr. Elizondo.
A long one. Good morning, mayor and council. Thank you all for being here. We're excited to kick off this budget workshop at 8:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning. I wanted to start just quickly by thanking our staff for being here, for all the tremendous amount of work that they put in to start putting the budget together and from every single department, all the inputs that they do. And then also, I wanted to just say, is this working? I also wanted to say thank you all, thank you to council as well, the amount of time and effort and input and feedback and hard votes that you guys take, sometimes in the face of adversity all year round, but specifically during budget season, we ask a lot of you guys to come in here like on a Saturday morning, all the different inputs from the department, everything that they do to put together and everything. It's a tremendous amount for you guys to analyze and give us feedback on. So, thank you guys for being here and thank the staff for being here. We're going to start off this budget workshop with aptly with our strategic plan. The strategic plan is our guiding overarching document that guides the policy and the direction of the entire city. So, it's great that we're kicking off by looking at that, what has been enhanced and what we've all been working on to drive it forward for this next '25-'26 budget year. And then we're going to have a little teaser on kind of the second iteration of the strategic plan, our open government and transparency page. And then we're going to have, look into some of the work that the staff has done across the entire organization to update and enhance our core values to also to align with the strategic plan, but also to align with the city itself and the internal values of the city itself. So, we will kick this off with our strategic plan. At the beginning of the visioning workshop, if you guys remember, I showed a Visa commercial to you guys that didn't quite land, so I have a Discover commercial this morning that's going to blow your minds. I'm joking. I'm kidding. There's no, there's no commercial. What I want to start with is a little bit of history on the, I want to start with a little bit of history on the strategic plan. Last year, the large amount of this group put in a tremendous amount of effort all throughout the year, working with staff, but specifically at the visioning workshop last year, to build and design and grow and adopt the first strategic plan of the city of Kyle. That strategic plan was an overarching vision of the city, what the city's aspirational vision of where the city wants to go. And then also, this group put together a strategic focus areas, five strategic focus areas that support that vision. So, you have this big aspirational vision and then you have these specific areas of how you're going to accomplish that vision. And we'll look at those and how they've been enhanced this year. Then staff took all of that input from council, that vision, those strategic areas, and built out over 80 different action items, very specific, trackable action items that are going to support those focus areas that then support the vision of the city and where we're going. And then, and then one level below that, we took all of the data inputs, key performance indicators, performance metrics, high level that support all of those high level action items. So, you can see this document from top to bottom across the entire organization is how we are all pulling in the same direction to get the same things done and tracking it to make sure that they get done in a timely way. So, it's an incredibly important document. This year, all of those, by the way, all of those that were built last year, they were put online in a dynamic format that was on the front page of our website. It's been there for the better part of a year. Any citizen, council internally can look at it, open it up, look at all the data behind it. It's incredibly transparent and show, and we want it to be, to show everyone what we've been working on, where we're going and the direction we're going in. This year, across the entire year, but more specifically at the visioning workshop, the council came together, they did not, no longer had to build a strategic plan from scratch, but looked at enhancing and uplifting all the elements of the strategic plan because in our view and in council's view, this document is not something that we put together, put on the shelf and let it collect dust. This is a document that is living and breathing and constantly, constantly needs to be evaluated and updated and enhanced because the city is constantly being updated and evaluated and enhanced and driven forward. So, at the, specifically at the visioning workshop this last March, you all got together and did a tremendous amount of work and effort. It was the better part of a day and a half of looking at and uplift, and uplifting, enhancing all the elements of this strategic plan that we have. The first one being our vision statement. We had a vision statement that was crafted last year. This vision statement, you guys got together, you all worked together to build and enhance the vision statement and came up with an aspirational statement that Kyle aspires to be the undisputed regional leader in vehicular and pedestrian mobility, state-of-the-art parks and sports infrastructure, downtown redevelopment and quality of life retail, which augment a diverse, vibrant, equitable, thriving community that families, neighbors and businesses are proud to call home. So, this is our '25-'26 aspirational, large overview vision statement that's in the strategic plan. Going forward from that, the strategic focus areas, we have, this group evaluated and then crafted very specific language that, that supports those focus areas. There was, this language has existed before, but again, it was evaluated and enhanced and tweaked. Those main areas of how we're going to drive that vision forward, how we're going to get there is with a thriving and prosperous economy, right? With a sustainable and resilient infrastructure, with excellent and accountable city government, with a safe and welcoming community and with vibrant and fun destination. And we have all the verbiage underneath each one that supports all of those different buckets. And I would mention that this document, if you, you know, we do so many things, staff, all the different departments, all the different divisions, they come in every single day. They have a tremendous amount of inputs, tremendous amount of work that they do every single day. However, if you go and talk to those staff members and you say, apart from the emails you're responding to, apart from the service requests, or I shouldn't say apart actually, with the service requests that you're, that you're working every single day, what is the overarching mission? What are we, what is your department and what is the city itself driving toward? They would point to this document because this is the document that at the very, at the very top view of everything is what's, what everyone's working for and pulling for. This is how you get an organization like ours that does so many different things to all go in the same direction and to all be pulling for the same thing. It's an incredibly powerful and necessary document. So, this year, in April, after the council's vision workshop in March, the staff got together and all, and worked, did many of the same team building exercises that council did. And then all the discussions and everything that council talked about was relayed to staff, all of the enhancements, all of the new, the enhanced vision statement, the strategic focus areas. And then staff did a very similar exercise where that we looked at all of the action items from last year and how we could enhance and uplift them to then, to then support the new, the enhanced and lifted strategic focuses and the vision. And so, one of the things we looked at, many of the, many of the action items that we had from last year are still very much applicable, right? We're still moving in the same direction. We still have a lot of the same projects. But we looked at some of these action items from last year that we built and in, in the vein of enhancing them, we thought, many of them are multi-year projects, right? So, I wanted to show an example of one here. This is from last year. To create plan, design, begin development and build Lake Kensington Nature Park. That's a, that's a huge project, right? It's incredibly important for the city, but that entire process is probably a two-, three- year process. I mean, this is a multi-year process. So, when we, in the, in the, with the idea of tracking these different action items and having them, you know, open to the public and open to internal staff and open to the council to see, we wanted to make it very applicable year over year as we looked at these. It's very hard to say whether a three-year, four-year, five-year project is on track or off track, right? You could be a year, a year and a half in and say, yeah, we're still on track because we still have five years left to go, right? So, what we wanted to do is take these really big projects and we wanted to break them down to be, year over year, to be very actionable, very easily trackable for everyone to see each year as we continue to update, enhance and develop this document, right? So, as an example, this is, this is an example of, of what staff did as they tweaked it. I would point out, I loved this, that one of the, one of the action items from last year was update parks master plan and create a new five-year CIP. And that has been achieved this year. We, this last meeting on the 27th, council adopted the new pros master plan. We started designing and updating all of the parks according to that master plan. So, there's an example, and you can see in the comment there, updated parks master plan, adopted 5/27. So, you could, we're, many of these items are continuing to move forward, will stay on here, will be achieved this year. But as an example of making them a little bit more actionable, we tweaked, the staff tweaked the Lake Kensington item rather than, you know, create, design, build and complete Lake Kensington Nature Park, it's create full design services of Lake Kensington Nature Park. So, it's something this year, by the end of 2026 or before, we want to have full design services completed for Lake Kensington Nature Park, which makes it much easier to track over the year. So, if you're six months into the year and you have, you know, 5% design of the nature park, you're behind, you're off track, right? You're not going to get that completed here. And we can communicate that clearly to our residents, to council, and internally, we can see that and track it because staff looks at this on a daily basis. So, we're, so staff is continuing the process of going through all of these action items, adding a few because we've had projects that have come on, taking off a few because we've achieved some and they, and they're finished, and then also updating many of the larger products. Our wastewater treatment plant upgrade is another great example of one. That's a long-term project. What are we doing this year and how can we track it this year to make sure that we're on track? And then next year, as we do the same process, as we update this process, we move on to the next iteration of that. Hopefully, that makes sense to everybody. Of course, we're also going to have within the strategic plan, all of our open data that anyone can go in and download and look at and drill into. All of our KPIs, that's, that's going to continue to be one and continue to be enhanced. And I will, I would say that this document, I've showed this, I've showed this slide on, in several presentations, but I'd say this document will, will be worked on all throughout this budget session and then it will be adopted with the budget as we adopt, adopt the budget in September. So, this will be fully fleshed out and finished for the '25-'26 strategic plan and adopted in September. This is just a slide, you guys have all seen it before, but for anybody watching that doesn't, hasn't seen it, this is a slide that just illustrates how that high-level city vision works all the way through this document, through the strategic focus areas and outcomes and action items and KPIs and data, all the way back up through so that truly everything that everyone is doing from, in the entire organization is driving in the same direction and tracked. So, just a quick little teaser on what's coming in the next couple of weeks. We have this almost completely ready to launch. We have kind of the phase two, the larger expansion of one element, of one element lower of our strategic plan. So, this is our transparency portal, our city's open data portal. And within this portal, we have, this will be the main link on our front website. It's where our view of it is one centralized place where all of these, these different elements come together. We'll have our strategic plan linked in here, so you can click on it and look through the entire strategic plan and all the data and inputs that are in it. We have our budget book that's coming at the end of September, when we, when we launch the budget. We'll have a, an online, dynamic, easily digestible, easily understood budget book that citizens and council and staff can look through and download the data on. It's, that will be coming as we approve the budget this year. And then we have department pages for all of these departments and growing, and we have more that are going to come later, that has the mission, the values, the vision of the different departments, different performance metrics that you can pull in that are more specific to the departments, department budgets, and plenty of stuff for everyone to see through each department. We're also tracking all of our CIP. We have over 100 capital projects that will be on here. You can, you can click on them, you can drill into them, you can see all the detail levels of them, where they're at, comments from, from our staff to say exactly where these projects are at. So, if you, it's very hard to keep track of everything that's happening, especially from a citizen standpoint where you're, I remember they were going to update this one roundabout, or I remember that this one park was going to be updated, what's, what's going on with it? You could click here and look and see exactly where it's at. And then we'll also have some miscellaneous items like our legislative program, our lean government program, and a host of other pages and programs that our staff is really excited about utilizing, utilizing this kind of central hub for transparency and open data to put information out to the public. So, this is coming, we're going to launch this page in the next couple of weeks. Of course, we'll put a bunch of stuff out on our socials and let everybody know, but we're very excited about it. It's kind of the second iteration, the larger growth of that strategic plan that we're building. So, all of that will be coming soon, the strategic plan approved and adopted for '25-'26 with the, with the upcoming budget. Now, I'm going to invite Rosie Truella up here to talk about our core values and the process that we did internally to update them.
Good morning, everyone. Very excited to be here to talk about core values and how we have approached updating the core values for the city of Kyle. So, first, I want to recognize, they're not here, but I want to recognize the members of our employee engagement committee. These are the staff that represent departments across the city that have come together to really help champion this effort that we've made to update our core values. Actually, I think one of them, of this member of this team is here, and that's Betty. She's back there. She was part of our core values team. So, thanks to all of these guys for their time and attention to this. We started talking about core values with, with our employee engagement committee back in February, and we went through a multi-step process to get to where we're at today, which is presenting our updated values in anticipation of adopting them with the strategic plan in, in August or September as part of the budget process. You'll see, we had lots of conversation with the employee engagement committee. We had lots of conversation with citywide employees through surveys, through engagement efforts around getting feedback on, on what we were looking at. We brought things in, excuse me, we brought things in for our city leadership retreat, and that brings us to where we're at today. So, Kyle's core values have been in place since about 2015. Since then, we have grown. We were, back in 2015, 2016, we were about 206 employees and now we're up to 439. Our population's grown from 36,000 to over 65,000. Since I got here, and I know since the city manager got here, we've repeatedly heard that our current core values, knowledge, yes, attitude, leading edge and employee accountability, have started to feel a little dated and out of touch with the results-oriented leading city that we are becoming. We started by doing with the engagement committee a peer review. We looked at what our friends across central Texas are doing, what they have for their core values, what they looked like, how they communicated them with their employees, and what popped from those, those different cities are things like integrity and innovation and teamwork and service and professionalism. And that certainly fed our initial discussions with the employee engagement committee. Reminding everyone, our, our current values, KYLE, knowledge, yes, attitude, leading edge and employee accountability, but they're really more than that. We don't often talk about the more detailed aspects of the core values, with knowledge being knowledgeable in all aspects of the job and city operations, maintaining high quality of work, following health and safety guidelines. Yes, attitude, demonstrating superior customer service, treating other employees and citizens with kindness, promoting goodwill and solving conflict with tact. Leading edge, continually looking for areas to improve upon, a decisive and adaptive, supporting new ideas and a driver for change, innovation or innovative. And then employee accountability, actively seeking and giving performance feedback in order to determine developmental opportunities and using feedback and opportunity, as an opportunity for continuous improvement. We, we often would get stuck with just those first words and not really focusing on the rest of them. So, with the employee engagement committee, we spent a lot of time talking about what we liked about our current values, what do we like from the other city examples, what jumps out as missing, what do you value about the culture at the city of Kyle, and how would you describe the city of Kyle culture in one word? And from that, we came up with a whole round of concepts. So, with this, we, we took and spent our time as the employee engagement committee to select the ones that were the most meaningful to the employee engagement committee, with them going back, talking to their peers in their departments and bringing that feedback to the table. We narrowed that list down to the words you see on this screen, noting that we added the current values that we have, the KYLE. And we actually took this to the employees for, for a vote, for feedback. We had boards in all of our city facilities in the break rooms. We had a virtual survey that would allow people to, to vote on what spoke to them. We had lots of conversations around this with the workforce and their employee engagement committee members to see what, you know, what rose to the top. When we looked at that, after the two weeks that, that folks had to cast their votes, these are the results that we had. The ones that did rise to the top were integrity, accountability, teamwork, communication and transparency. And so, that's really where the employee engagement committee focused on trying to bring something to city leadership as a way to, you know, update and formalize our, our core values. So, we took integrity, accountability, teamwork, communication and transparency to our city leadership retreat. And with that, coupled with the city council vision that had just been adopted, your, your visioning workshop was in the middle of our effort. So, we didn't have the benefit of your updated vision statement until we were basically at the point of talking to city leadership. So, we took the, the vision statement that council adopted and added, we took out communication and we added the concept of visionary leadership. And this is where, where we have landed as our recommendation from staff and from city management on the city of Kyle core values. So, visionary leadership, we provide, we prioritize setting a clear forward-thinking vision that drives innovation and progress. Integrity, we conduct ourselves ethically and honestly to establish and maintain trust. Accountability, we take responsibility for our actions and decisions, demonstrating strong financial stewardship and providing quality public service. Teamwork, we inspire collaboration towards a common objective and share resources to achieve our strategic vision and transparency. We achieve results through open, accessible, data-informed actions and communication. And we're really excited to, to see this, and I know this will resonate well with the staff.
Viet.
Pardon?
Viet.
It's not, it's not a word. We actually talked about, you know, we, we talked about the fact that while we liked the values of Kyle being Kyle, that we didn't feel like we needed to have a word that it matched. So, that wasn't one of our goals, to have it be a word. But yes, Viet.
I, look, I, I'm glad that y'all went down this road because I think it's too long we try to, you know, match wording or something like that, and it's important to make sure that we're looking at what the core of the values are. And that's kind of what y'all focus on here, and I like that a lot better. Instead of focusing on a word, we focus on what really mattered, and that's important. So, good job.
Thank you. And then as far as next steps, we will bring this forward with the budget to formally adopt in the coming months. And that's it. Thank you, guys. Any other questions?
No, I agree with Councilor Rizzo. I think that's a really good process you went through, and I love the, I loved the word cloud up at the beginning as well. Those are a lot of good words to go through. So, it's glad to know that, that staff is iterating, moving forward and trying to, you know, rise to the occasion, setting clear objectives. I think it's great. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other feedback on the strategic plan or any, any of those issues that we want to talk about? If we're good with that, we can move on to the next item. Just wanted to, to make sure. I know it's still early, so. Good morning.
No, it was a great presentation. It was great.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Mayor, do you want to call the next item?
All right, next up is agenda item two. Receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction on preliminary five-year financial forecast for the city's general fund for fiscal years '25-'26 through '29-30. Mr. Mahi.
Good morning, mayor and council. For the record, I'm Prevez Mahi, city's director of finance. So, today, I'm going to cover the approved budget, approved budget for cities. Lay that as the foundation for what we are about to talk about, which is the five-year financial forecast. So, I'm going to cover city's fund structure, approved budget for general fund, property tax rate, and our property tax rate projection for '26. We're going to share with you what sales tax are looking at, and then go into the five-year forecast. Why do we do the five-year forecast? What's the purpose of it? We'll cover some of the key assumptions for general fund financial forecast, and then get into the preliminary five-year financial forecast, what it looks like, and then wrap up with the next steps in the budget process. So, this is the city's fund structure overall. So, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this slide, but just a few things to note. This is based on the current approved budget for the city of Kyle. If you look at the top box, the total budget for the city of Kyle is $365 million. Then if you get down to the next level, there are three boxes across governmental funds, proprietary funds and fiduciary funds. So, every government in the U.S., and some of it in our future 51st state, follow the same GASP rules, meaning we all follow the same way for accounting and financial reporting. So, on the governmental fund side, these are the funds that we account for, segregate funds by purpose for the general function of the government, whether it's a state government, federal government, local government or accounting government. The middle part are the propriety funds. These are the funds that account for commercial type of business activity the city of Kyle has. In other words, we have user fees, we have customers, they get service and they pay for those services. And the last box is for a irrevocable trust fund that we have for other post-employment benefits. So, amongst these three boxes, you will note I've color-coded, and each box represents a set of books, general ledger, financial statements, balance sheet, income statement. The governmental funds have their own set of rules, how we account and financially report. They're very different than proprietary or commercial accounting, which is the center box. It's a different set of rules, different ways of accounting and different ways of reporting. 65% of our funds are accounted in the governmental funds, and then 35% is in the commercial accounting, which is the middle box. When it comes to commercial accounting, what do we have in city of Kyle? We have water utility, wastewater utility, storm drainage. And then on the governmental side, the main primary fund on the governmental side is the city's general fund. And then within these boxes, you will see blue, green and yellow. The blue represents our operating funds. We have four major operating funds, general fund, water utility, wastewater utility, storm drainage. Yellow represents, these are CIP funds, capital improvement funds, parks, wastewater treatment plant, water plant, water reservoirs, those types of things, streets, sidewalks. What we are going to focus on today is the circle I have over the blue fund, general fund. This is our largest operating fund for the city. So, I showed you the total budget. By the way, on this one, we have now close to 60 separate funds, and by next year, we're going to be adding another five to 10 new funds. So, each one, remember, is a separate set of books. So, $365 million budget for this year for the city, this is across the board for all city funds, all operations. How is it broken? Real quick, 68% is for CIP. Then you'll see the red slice, general fund, about 18%, and then the other three operating funds and debt service, which is about 4%. So, now, we're going to drill down to general fund. How does the general fund approved budget look like for this year? And I'm going to show you the sources of funds and then uses of funds, how those funds are used. So, this is the sources of funds. We have council approved a total of $77.4 million for this year, and this is how it's split up. If you notice, the burnt orange, which is the largest slice, is sales tax. Neck and neck with that is property tax, the blue, dark blue. Then development fees, and we'll talk about development fees in a little bit for next year. And then number four is transfers in. These are transfers coming into general fund from other funds of the city. A good example would be general fund from the utilities, indirect cost allocations that the general fund provides services to other funds of the city. So, that, that's the total sources of revenue for the general fund, 77.4 million. Now, the expenditure side. $83.2 million is what city council approved for this year. You'll notice that revenues were 77.4, expenditures are slightly higher, $83.2 million. And that's because we utilized excess reserves or fund balance in the general fund because we're doing good. We utilize those to pay for capital improvements. Rather than borrowing money, we paid cash for some of our CIP projects. So, the largest slice of pie on the expenditure side is public safety, dark blue. Number two is transfers out, which is about Number two is transfers out, which is about $15 million. Over 60% of that is for cash funding CIPs instead of borrowing. And then we have a number of other transfers out. Number three is public works, and number four, parks and recreation. And then you see all other functions and activities of the city, from city manager's office, financial services, HR, IT, and so on and so forth. So these are the uses of those funds. Now let's talk about overall tax rates in Kyle. So if you own a home in Kyle, within the city of Kyle limits, your overlapping tax rate is 2.255. And that makes up from these taxing jurisdictions. So your tax bill most likely shows most of these taxing jurisdiction. Number one is the school district, which is more than half, about 51% of the tax rate. Number two is City of Kyle, at 21%. Number three is the county. County has two pieces. For their general government is the larger yellow slice, which is about 14%. And then they also have a separate road tax, which is about 2%. So if you add those two together, it's about 16% total. And then the rest, we have ACC, ESDs, and the conservation districts, groundwater districts. So total overlapping tax rate, 2.25. Let's drill down to City of Kyle tax rate. This is our current tax rate today that council adopted. As you recall from my prior presentations during budget, there are two pieces or two components to the tax rate: MNO tax rate and INS. MNO is the operations of the city or general government. And then INS is the interest and sinking rate, which pays for debt service on monies that we borrow to fund general fund-type capital projects: sidewalks, roads, parks, things like that. So our MNO tax rate is 28.89 per $100. Our interest and sinking fund rate is 18.04 for a combined tax rate of 46.93. And it's important to keep in mind these two pieces, because the next slide I'm about to show you will give you a historical perspective as to how these two pieces moved over time. So the dark blue is MNO, the yellow is INS. So if you look from the far left, in 1992, our tax rate was 69.26. Then if you move towards the center, the lowest tax rate was in 2008 at 16.27. Then in 2016, I just picked that because that's the next high bar, is 58.48. Then as you move through the time spectrum, towards the right-hand side, right before the last bar, is our current tax rate, 46.93. And if you recall our discussions on April 1st, when the financial advisor and I came before you to show you the projected tax rate, which is the last column, 61.71. So if you recall, MNO tax rate is 28.89, and the debt service tax rate is 18.04. But when you look at the projected tax rate, the INS, the debt service rate, is in the yellow, which is about 32, 32.82. So that's going up, right? However, the blue, which is the MNO, is constant at 28.89. And we know that's not going to happen, because when the tax rolls come out in July, when we calculate the actual tax rates, that MNO rate is going to move. And it's going to move, most likely, by a penny or two upwards. So our preliminary tax rate projection is 61.71. It might move by a penny or a penny and a half, or it could be as high as two pennies. So that's early in the process. I just wanted to make you aware that even though we were projecting 61.71, the blue piece of that is constant, because we don't know that answer yet. So let's move to sales tax. This is a historical chart going back to 2008. It's about 18 years, I think. What I want to draw your attention to is from 2019. If you recall, we had pandemic towards the end of 2019. 2020, most people stayed home, ordered their groceries online, they bought things online, they sent stuff to their family and friends online. So there were a lot of online sales that generated or initiated in City of Kyle. Online sales, you get sales tax if it is initiated or generated within your jurisdiction. So if I was ordering in New York City, back to Texas, New York City gets the sales tax. But if I order in Kyle and send it to New York City, Kyle gets that sales tax. So between 2019 and 2020, sales tax increased by 21, almost 22%. Between 20 and 21, it increased, between 21 and 22, it increased by 25%. We're coming out of COVID, we had new businesses in town, a lot of local retail businesses opened. So we saw results of that in '22. That was almost a 25% increase in sales tax collections. Then it started to taper off. As businesses got established, the excitement leveled off, people went back to their favorite go-tos, they went back to their shopping, prefer shopping places. So between '22 and '23, it tapered off down to 11.6%. We were projecting 10.5%. So we were still ahead. Between '23 and '24, the last fiscal year that we ended, September 30, 2024, it dipped down to 9.8%, the actual collections. Our projections for this year that we base the budget on, remember, when we adopt the budget, we're doing, based on projections, right? We're starting the budget process for next year. We're only in May. So these are early projections that we base on, and as things unfold, we implement strategies to mitigate positive or negative impact of those projections. So in '24, we ended up the year with a 9.8% growth in sales tax base. Between '24 and '25, the budget estimates 11.8% or 11.7% sales tax growth. When you look at our actual numbers that we have collected through month of May, it is tapering back, it's slowing down. We are seeing signs of slowdown, and you'll see that when Melissa talks about community development trends. We're seeing slowdown in our local economy at the sales tax level, at the permit level, at the planned development level. So we have to be mindful of, as to what we assume in next year's budget. So before I get into the financial forecast, do y'all have any questions on the current budget and the tax rate or sales tax? If not, I'll move on to the five-year financial forecast. So why do we do a financial forecast? What is the purpose of it? We've always done it in Kyle, ever since I've been here, since 2010, we've done a financial forecast. We may not have brought it in front of council, but in the background, we always did a financial forecast. It is necessary. If you don't do one, you're just literally rolling the dice for next year's budget. So here are the three takeaways as to why we do financial forecasts. Forecast is an essential part of the annual budget process to help with decision-making, not only at the city manager's level, but also at city council's level. Because you're setting the policies, you're setting the rates, you're approving the tax rates, utility rates, everything else in between. The purpose of the financial forecast is to evaluate current and future fiscal conditions to help guide policy and program or service delivery decisions. And lastly, a financial forecast is a fiscal management tool that presents estimated information based on past, current, and future financial conditions. So it takes into account what we have actually realized in the past, it takes into account what we are facing today, current conditions, and what the future holds. So that's why I went into what the current budget looks like, what the sales tax looks like, and where we are on those two major revenue sources of the general fund. So before I get into the details of the financial forecast, I want y'all to understand that we are only in May. These are preliminary five-year financial forecast data. They're based on actual information through March 31st. We always wait till at least the midway point of the fiscal year. So we have six months of actual data as to how we're doing for this current fiscal year. So a little bit about the five-year forecast you're about to see. Forecast is based on preliminary financial information and assumptions. Revenue and expenditure data are subject to change. City departments will be reviewing their proposed budget with the city manager. So all those moving pieces are still moving, they haven't been solidified yet. Certified assessed valuations, this is the main piece that we use to calculate the tax rate for next year. That data to us, the certified tax rule, is not going to be provided to us until July 25th. The state law requires the local appraisal districts, our chief appraisers in every Texas jurisdiction, to deliver the certified tax rules to these taxing jurisdictions no later than July 25th. And we normally get it about two or three days before, sometimes right on the clock. So as we build and finalize the city's proposed budget for '26, revenue and expenditure information will be further refined and updated. So I just want y'all to be aware that what I'm about to share with you, these are not the final numbers. They will change, because we'll get more data, we'll have more information. City manager hasn't gone through any of the city department proposed budgets yet. So that is still undergoing. So to look into the future, we don't have a crystal ball, but we have the next best thing. We come up with assumptions that we will use to predict what the future is going to look like. So I will share with you some of the key assumptions we are using in our financial forecast for the general fund. We're only talking about general fund today. So if you remember, the two main sources of revenue are property tax and sales tax. So we start with property tax. We're assuming property valuation's growth in Kyle, proper Kyle, citywide, excluding TERS. 7% next year, 7% the year after that, and then gradually increasing each of the few years in the five-year forecast. So we're pulling back, we're tapering back on growth assumptions for property valuations. If you own property in Kyle, you may have already received your valuations. Most people are seeing in Kyle a decline in their property valuations, most, almost most. So if that trend continues on the final assessment, we are adjusting for that in our assumptions. So this is almost like building an algorithm. What are the main pieces or assumptions to predict not only next year, but the next two, three years? When you go beyond three years in a five-year forecast, it gets a little murky. But the first two, for sure next year, is going to be very close to what we are assuming in our assumptions.
Pravez, just real quick, when you're looking at this property value growth, you're also taking into account the new housing coming in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So we have to keep in mind that we have six TERSs now, right? So when we create a TERS, it has a boundary. Any valuations increases, the core city does not benefit from it. That benefit stays within the TERS boundary. We're seeing, overall, we're going to see 7% is what we're assuming. But within the TERSs, you will see slightly higher growth, especially in TERS number two. TERS number two is doing really well. That's a 50% TERS. So we get benefit, the general fund gets benefit of the other 50%, but the other 50% stays within the TERS. Sales tax growth, in the past, we have ranged anywhere from 12.5% to about 10.5% each year. We are tapering back to 9% next year, 9% the year after that, and slightly increasing. This cycle is not going to be forever. We're going to come out of it, we're going to get out of it, and we're going to grow back to our normal place. So you'll see in all of these that we are tapering back, and maybe in the first two years, and then releasing it back to where we normally are. On the development revenue growth, next two fiscal years, I am recommending to city manager that we taper back and not assume any growth. And you'll see that in our community development presentation today. Because from where we sit in finance, from the revenue side, anything in the pipeline from plat to actual paying customer takes us between 18 and 24 months, right? So if you don't have things in the pipeline today, it's going to slowly trickle. So we're tapering back on the development, zero. New development, zero in '26, zero in '27, and hopefully in '27, when I come back, or whoever else comes back, that number is going to be different. Hopefully it'll be a positive, not just stay at zero in '27. Other revenues, these are franchise tax, court revenues, fines, interest income. We're keeping it level at 5% across. The last one here on this page, on the revenue side, general fund transfer from water and wastewater utilities. I want to pause here. I want to pause here, excuse me. I want to pause here and explain. This is something new for the first time we're doing. It is a little different than what you have been accustomed to seeing in the past years. So water and wastewater utility, if you remember, early on I explained, those are our commercial businesses, right? We own, the general fund owns, these commercial businesses that are enterprises. Had they been a private utility, they would be paying us property tax, franchise tax, use for the roads, paying general fund for supporting, providing support to those utilities. The general fund transfer that you see in the general fund each year has been a flat rate of $650,000 from water utility, another $650,000 from wastewater utility, for a combined total of $1.3 million that comes from the utility to the general fund for the services it provides to the two utilities. This year, in '26, we're changing that formula slightly. So rather than having it fixed $650, and by the way, that $650 hasn't changed in quite some time. So when I say quite some time, I would say it hasn't changed since like 2014, 2015 timeframe. So we're slightly changing that formula because general fund is growing, is providing more and more services to the utility. The utility is getting more complex, is requiring more support from the general fund. It's using their big trucks and cranes and heavy equipment are using our roads, right? So there's more cost that the utility is placing on the general fund. So to recoup some of that back, we are changing the formula whereby the general fund will receive 8% of their gross revenue. And by gross revenue, I mean nothing else except the sale of water or the wastewater service. Because they have other sources of income as well. They have late charges, late fees, interest income, refunds. We're not going to apply that percentage on those items. Just the sale of their main product on the water side is the sale of water. On the wastewater side is the wastewater service. So the delta between these two formulas, if we had left it alone at flat $650 on each side, that results in $1.3 million, right? So that's what we have been receiving on the general fund side. By changing the formula, basing it on actual revenues of the two utility systems, it will change from $1.3 million to about 2.5. So it adds about $1.2 million. But it is not just a estimate. It is based on the actual services that the general fund provides. The city manager has undertaken an indirect cost study that is still ongoing that basically determines how much of general fund is dedicated for other activities of the city, right? Because if you think of city attorney's office or city manager's office, they don't go and serve a customer directly, right? They don't produce water. They don't build the parks. They don't build the streets or finance or HR. All of those support services are there to provide services for departments that provide direct services to our customers, our residents. So this study will determine how much of that general fund cost should be allocated to each one of these direct services pieces. So right now, my estimate is that 8% will be adequate to cover that. But it might change by the time we bring the final budget to you all because we'll have the final study results by then. So I just wanted to take the time and explain to you all that we're changing this formula, and what that will look like, and why. So these are the major assumptions. Yes, sir.
I have a question. On the development revenue growth, Perez, does that include the development revenue growth in the TERSs? Or does that stay within the TERSs?
That includes both.
Both, the TERSs and...
Yeah.
That kind of, you know, that shows that we don't have unmanaged explosive growth to me if for the next two years, say no development revenue growth.
Especially next year in particular. And I think as Melissa goes through her presentation, you'll see an insight as to what they are projecting, especially for next year.
I want to make sure it's clear. This is fees related to development, not so much tax valuation and growth of value of properties. We're still expecting to have quite a few developments, revenues, permits, all those things associated with it. We're just not adding a growth factor to it. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Melissa, when she goes through her presentation, she'll show you some of the numbers we've seen. And we're still growing, just not quite as robustly as what we had in this '21, '22, '23 period.
Stable growth, basically.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what are assumptions, major assumptions for the expenditures for the general fund? Operations and maintenance, this bucket includes all our salaries, fringe benefits, insurance, office supplies, travel, training. We're assuming that that base cost will increase 5% a year. Meet and confer, and you'll see this discussion in chief's presentation. We have assumed, and that $1 million increase in year number two, it should be $1.2 million. We're assuming that the meet and confer negotiations that have been ongoing will result in about a $1.2 million cost increase in year one, 2026. And then thereafter, we're assuming that it will grow by 3%. Basically, there are step increases on average. Compensation or merit pay for civilian employees, we're assuming 3.5% over the five-year period. Healthcare cost increase, we're assuming at 10%. And then, lastly, the cash-funded CIPs, we're tapering back because if you recall, we're tapering back on the revenue side. So we have to taper back on how much we can spend cash funding CIPs over the next few years. Here again, as we open up the revenue stream, we're going to have money in the future years to pay cash for some of our CIP projects. You'll see it slightly increases in year number two. And then when you look at year number five, it's almost $8 million. And now, we're going to get into the five-year forecast. So the way I'm going to lay this out for you all, I'm going to do it in three sections, or three steps. First, I'm going to show you the revenue projections based on the assumptions that we just went over. What does the revenue picture look like over the five-year period? And that will show us how much money is available in the general fund. Mind you, these are preliminary numbers. Step two, I'm going to show you the expenditures over the five-year period using the same set of assumptions that we went over. And in that section, I will show you the expenditures and the change it will cause or result in the fund balance. And the last piece I will show you is the impact on the fund balance of the general fund, what the policy requires, and where we are in each one of those five years compared to the policy. Okay? And then the fourth, I'll bring it all back together and show you one big piece. All right? We ready? All right. So, projected sources of funds. I know there are a lot of rows and numbers and columns. So let me first orient you as to the format of this table. Because all those three pieces will be exactly the same format, but we'll be talking about revenue, expenditures, fund balance. So from, I'm using the sources of fund slide. So going from left to right, the first column describes the category or the type of revenue. In other slides, it'll be type of expenditures. Next column is the approved budget that the city council approved or authorized or adopted for this fiscal year that we're in. Column after that is current year estimate. This is our best estimate for the year based on information we have through mid-year, March 31st. So what does it look like by 9:30 based on what we know through mid-year? So that's current year estimate. Then the next five columns are the projections for the same information looking ahead. This gives you a glimpse into the future as to what that revenue picture is going to look like based on the set of assumptions that we discussed and assumed. So let's take it from the top. Revenue, property tax. I'll just, I won't go through every line, but I'll use one, property tax, as an example to walk you through. So property tax, in the current budget, council approved $20.25 million based on the certified tax rule, the tax rate calculations, the limitations in the tax rate calculations, all that. We estimated that we will bring in $20.25 million. Our current year estimate that we're going to hit that mark for property tax, if not slightly higher. Using the 7% growth factor we went over for property tax, we're saying that next year, property tax revenue will be slightly higher, about $22 million. And you can see years two through five is growing every year at the rate of 7% that we assumed. When we get to year number five, remember I said beyond year three, it gets a little murky. We're at $30 million. We're adding new properties. We're increasing valuations. And the tax rates is going to move. So there are a number of factors that are moving. So that's on the tax rate. So when you look at all the different major category of revenue sources for the general fund, they're all moving positively, but at a slower rate in the five-year window. When you look at the bottom line, if you look at the bottom line total revenue, adopted budget of $77.4 million, and our best estimate for this year is $68.5 million. So there is a slight gap between what the budget was based on and what we are predicting we're going to end up by 9:30, right? 77.4 versus 68.6. So where is that? Where's that gap? Which line is causing that gap? Sales tax is slightly, we went over it, right? We're pulling back, not only on the future, but we're seeing, we're realizing slightly less sales tax revenue this year. So our prediction, our best estimate, is about $1 million less. The next big one is the development revenue. We had estimated almost $14 million in development revenues and fees, plan reviews, those types of things, inspections. Our best estimate is about $7.2 million. So...
Perez has a question on that. So we're looking at a decrease from our original estimated budget in development revenues. It seems to me that is the one line item on this revenue budget that actually has expenses that will change as well, right?
Yeah.
They may go down. There's utility connections and things like that that are not going to happen, that there may have been fees included in there.
So development revenues are strictly based on plan reviews? The fees that we charge developers for reviewing their plans, for approving their plans, for doing inspections, issuing permits, issuing COs? Those are the development revenues that we're talking about?
Not for the infrastructure. But, so yeah, those expenses would not go down because they're fixed, basically fixed expenses with our...
But we are, we are, and I was about to share that. We are implementing strategies that would mitigate that shortfall that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll show you in a minute how we're going to recoup that.
I'm just looking at the flow in my head.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to jump in. The development revenues, they're not associated with any commercial fees? Like, so aren't they tied together that you would have less commercial coming in the next five years? So sales tax would also decrease? Aren't these tied together, development, commercial development fees?
So remember when I was saying that there is a lag between plat and actual paying customer, right? These plat lots won't turn into a rooftop for about 18 to 20, 24 months. So there won't be people buying in Kyle, generating sales tax until that time. But these development revenues that we're talking about, these are just going directly related to whether it's residential subdivision or commercial development or retail center development. These are plan reviews, subdivision reviews, permits, those types of fees that go through the process, plating fees.
But I would just say, to your point, lower levels of development affect our other revenue sources. So sales tax, we've had to pull down on some of those projections because we don't expect as much development to occur and as many new people to be in the community. Property taxes is also being lowered. So it does have a connection to those other ones, I think, as you're kind of pointing out. And we've tried to account for that in those other estimates as well.
Yeah, I see that. But like, the sales tax is pretty stable even with the... I was assuming there would be some commercial fees in the developments that we won't collect. And that would lead to commercial businesses and retail that would then, in the future, you know, decrease our sales taxes.
So there is a baseline of development revenues that we're going to collect, whether a new subdivision comes in or not, right? So we've assumed that baseline in the projections. But any new into, coming into the pipeline, we have tapered back or pulled back on for next year. And then hoping that by the time we get into '27 and '28, we'll be out of this cycle. Yeah.
And that's, what you're talking about is the projected sales tax increases. Sales tax is not going to slow down. I mean, we've already got the development in. We're already generating that sales tax. We're talking about the increases so that, with those watching at home, don't think that our sales tax are going down. It just seemed like the discussion was going that way. We're already, those brick and mortar places are already operating. They're already generating...
The base revenues are there.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
So this slide is the projected sources of funds for the general fund. So what are the takeaways from this slide? So let me capture that. The three highlights of the takeaways. The economy is slowing down. We're assuming that in our projections. We're reflecting that in our projections. We're aware of it. We're taking steps to recognize that in our forecast. We're planning ahead to mitigate the impact of that slowdown. So that's the takeaway on the sources of revenues for the general fund. So now let's get into piece number two for this building block of financial forecast, which is the uses of funds. These are the expenditure side of the equation. Same format, left to the right. But here, instead of revenues, we're showing you the major components of the expenditure requirements of the general fund. So operations and maintenance, $73 million was adopted budget, authorized expenditure with the city manager and his executive team implementing cost containment. with the city manager and his executive team implementing cost containment, prudent measures in spending, scrutiny in spending, reviewing spending and expenditures department by department. Our estimate is that by the time we get to the fiscal year end, we would spend maybe $67 million or slightly above. But that gives us that cushion that we're trying to mitigate on the revenue side, the gap on the revenue side. So that's the biggest piece that we think we can mitigate, the revenue gap in the current year. The next big line is the CIP, cash funding of CIPs. In the current year, it's almost $8.8 million authorized. We're going to, our best estimate is that we're going to transfer maybe $7.7 million because some of those projects that we had earmarked for cash funding, there's some natural slow in the expenditure level. There might be delays because of right-of-way acquisitions, there might be delays for utilities, what have you. But overall, we'll see savings on the, on the general fund CIP transfers. In the forecast, you'll see that we have tapered off on the CIP transfer. Next year, we're not going to show any CIP transfer and then slowly build it back over time. And the last piece is the transfers out for TERS, the six TERSs that we have. So the way it works is all the property tax revenue come into the general fund. Then we have to take it out based on our calculations, actual calculations, how much belongs to each one of those six TERSs, right? So that money is not available to general fund. It has to go back to the TERSs. So in the approved budget, we had calculated that about $1.9 million is what we're going to collect for TERS revenues and then we're going to send it back out to the individual TERSs. That is growing. Next year, you'll see it's growing to 2.1 million and then every year thereafter, that will grow. So now look at the, the bottom line. The approved budget for expenditures on the general fund is $83.7 million. We believe, based on city managers and the department heads and the management teams' execution of their day-to-day operations and close scrutiny on the expenditures, we will end up about $76, $77 million range. So there you have it is the overall mitigation strategy that we think we can mitigate the gap that we are experiencing on the revenue side.
Pervez, you might mention what those transfers out into the TERS actually means and what that's used for because it's kind of a, well, we're just giving away tax money.
Okay. So each TERS is created for a very specific purpose or benefit to the residents of Kyle. And it is a development tool that most cities use to expedite development. So it's a development tool that helps growth in areas that otherwise would not have grown or developed as fast at its normal course. So that's the underlying assumption for the benefit of a TERS. So each TERS is created slightly different, right? So TERS number one, our very first TERS in Kyle was created for the express purpose of funding 1626. Tax dot's plan for 1626 was way into the future when they had money or they could find money. We created the TERS, earmarked the tax revenue within that boundary to pay for the design and construction of 1626.
What's actually the increase in the tax revenue?
The incremental increase. So when TERS is created, on the day it's created, we take a temperature of what the book value of assets or properties within that TERS is. That will always belong to the general fund. That's why it's called tax increment revenue zone TERS. So anything above that creation, demarcation line, anything that grows over the future benefits the residents or improvements within that TERS boundary.
Which might be sidewalks, roads,
Yes.
landscaping, purchase of property, but all
Yeah, so
fixed or all city expenses.
Right. So those expenses are dedicated for improvements, public improvements within the TERS boundary. That might include parks, sidewalks, as you said, streets, roadways, roundabouts, highways. The reason I was focusing on TERS number one is we're so proud of TERS number one. The other benefit of creating a TERS is if you join hands with other taxing jurisdictions, in this case, Hayes County, TERS number one is 100% TERS. The city dedicates 100% of its tax revenue on the increment value and the county pitches in 100% of their value and their revenue. Together, we paid for the 1626. Now just visualize what Kyle would be without 1626. It opened up the development, future development of Kyle, Kyle's future. We had nothing east-west. We just had 35, right? So each TERS is created for a very specific purpose, for a very specific benefit. TERS number two, which is in the Plum Creek area, is a 50% TERS. And it's the most economically enhanced TERS, meaning development is having a huge impact because of this TERS. So it's generating more money compared to some of the other TERSs compared to the core city. The money generated within the TERS, 50% from City of Kyle, it's incremental, 50% from Hayes County pays for road improvements, roadways within that territory, lighting improvements on Kohler, roundabouts on Kohler. So all of those improvements, parks are dedicated. The taxpayers within the core city does not pay. The TERS revenue pays for those public improvements, but we all benefit, right?
Perhaps another way to talk about 1626, which is a good example, is when instead of saying, well, maybe we just wouldn't have built it, had we built 1626 outside of the TERS, then it would have been 100% on the city taxpayers to pay for it as opposed to the one commercial district, which now covers the cost using half county dollars. So had we said, you know what, we want to keep all those revenues in the general fund, we're not going to create TERS number one, and then we're still going to build 1626 as a general fund project, 1626 would have cost the city how much? Twice as much?
Yeah, the total bill was about $32 million.
Right, but, but just in general philosophically, it would have been twice as much, which would have had what impact on our tax rate, down or up?
Up.
Up. So you just need to keep that in mind as you're talking about these projects. It's not like we're taking away from the general fund, causing taxes to go up in order to put money aside into a TERS. We're using a TERS to pull in county dollars to fund a project the general fund otherwise wouldn't, would have to pay for. So it's a, like you say, we're proud of it because it doesn't have upward pressure. It funds projects with less upward pressure than had we done it all on our own.
That's correct, Mayor.
And we, we have all the development that occurred from that, the benefit of that. And if we had waited for the state to come in with funds, it might not be there at all at this point.
You're absolutely right. So the takeaways.
Pervez, can I say something? If we look back at like some of the earlier years, there were possibly another time where development fees dipped down and we had to come up with this similar strategy, right? Where now we focus on the operation and maintenance to close the gap. So wouldn't, didn't this occur? Like, I guess this is not like a new, a new happening. This is not something new to us, right?
Yeah, it's not an anomaly. We go through cycles just like any other business. We had gone through, but we have used similar strategies in the past as well for mitigating those gaps, you know? So it's not just the operation and maintenance cost containment. We're also looking at cash funding of, pulling back on cash funding of CIPs.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was saying. Historically, I mean, there must have been prior years where
Yeah.
there was a, I guess, you know, slow down here and we use the same approach to offset that in the next five years in the planning.
True.
It's not, not a new thing.
It seems like it's like maybe like every five years. Like I think about 2015 was an interesting year, the pandemic. We, we did almost like a freeze on accounts because we thought the economy was going to collapse. That's, this is nothing compared to the forecast we were considering then. And then like 2009, 2010, you know, those, it's tough because you're growing and you're trying to plan as the city's growing and then if there's a, you know, a contraction in that growth rate. But Pervez has always been extremely good at being ahead of that curve, which is why you can just see in the way he's reshaped the forecast. It puts pressure on us to consider a more bleak future, but I think that's the right approach because it just ensures that we're going to make a wise, you know, wise decisions moving forward. And this is the first year that sales tax projections are lower. Normally, we're over in our, you know, conservative. So there has been a change, but I do think it's important to underscore 0% growth means we anticipate collecting the same amount as the previous year. So it's not saying we don't expect to receive development fees. It's saying that we don't expect the development fees to be higher than they were in the previous year, which I think is smart.
Yeah, and I, I would challenge the word bleak. I don't think going forward, it's a more bleak for future. I think it still indicates a very thriving economy in Kyle.
Yes, and even the sales tax projections like that, that are lower, it's still a 7% year-over-year growth. So we're still, our sales tax revenues are still increasing year-over-year.
We're not
We're just lowering the rate at which they increase.
Right.
Yes, if I may add, is that like what you're saying, the business is already established. So the revenue is coming in, you know, we're talking about newer development coming in, maybe kind of tapering off, maybe there's some hesitation of what's going on in the economy all over, you know?
Well, we definitely had a huge
We're still bringing that in.
We definitely had a huge retail expansion
Yeah.
with the Endeavor site, you know, with Costco and everything, all the restaurants. And those have come online and are producing now. And there's like a lag, but just consider the New Quest project that's getting ready to break ground, that's even bigger than Endeavor. So that's, we have to consider both of that. I assume that, that retail project is still.
Yes, sir, we expect that to break ground in July.
Breaking ground in July, so that's 600,000, that's another dozen restaurants and, and that, right? So it's, it's a lot to, it's a lot to try to put into consideration.
And we're still moving up. I mean, think about from 08, 08 to where we are now, from 2 million to 20 million. I mean, that, that's just projected growth, you know, we're just, it's just slower growth. But man, I mean, when I look at those numbers, it's, it's night and day. I mean, where we've come as a city, we're now getting more sales tax than we did property tax. And I mean, I just wouldn't have thought of that back in 08. That's pretty amazing.
So Pervez, going back to the cash funding CIP, you're saying we're not going to pull any funding from there. Do you think a lot of it is that our road bond money is maturing to where we don't really need to pull the cash from there? Is that, is that maybe
No.
They can
Council, yeah, council member, this cash funding of CIP basically means that we have a project, right? Let's, let's assume it's a sidewalk project. It's $10 million. We try to determine how much cash we have, real cash in the bank, in our reserves that are surplus, that it is probably better applied to a capital project instead of borrowing money to pay for that same capital project. So basically using your savings to buy your car instead of financing it. So that's basically it. So we're going to taper back on that cash funding of capital projects. We'll finance when we need to. And as things improve, we'll come back and start financing cash funding. You'll see that picking up in year number two slightly and then it scales up in three.
Well, so to, to that point, what, to be as talking about what I just heard you say, does this, is this more flexibly applied now that we've changed up our debt policy to allow for us to use to combine projects and, and not necessarily issuing major tranches?
Yeah, so the new debt policy that the council recently adopted at the recommendation of city manager and city staff gives us more options and flexibilities in terms of managing our debt. So we take full opportunity of when it's cheaper to cash fund, when we have the cash or when interest rates are better looking, we go finance long-term. So a lot of different knobs we can twist and turn.
Yeah.
It's the use your cash that's in your wallet versus using your credit card to pay for
It depends on the situation.
You got cash, pay it and then now you gotta worry about it later.
Consider is, you know, that whenever the economy is expanding, it's good because we have all these new revenues, but it's also prices go up at the same time. I've noticed like construction prices. So the CIPs are, there's pressure on them to bust our budget north. But in this newer climate, our revenues are contracting some, but guess what? All of our, a lot of our CIP projects are coming in under budget as well because the economy is lower, there's more competition, which means we save. I think we've got some pretty good examples here recently of, of being substantially below construction budget on some of these projects.
That's right. We're going to be bringing to the council on June 17th, one of our latest road bond projects, Kohler's and BB West, and we did get those bids in. We haven't finalized all the numbers just yet. We'll have those by the 17th, but we're looking at about a $10 million savings compared to budget.
There you go.
10 million.
It, you gotta keep both of those in, in consideration as you're budgeting, which is why it's great to have a, you know, a finance director and a financial team that understands both of those and budgets well.
So I want to reemphasize what y'all just talked about. It is not gloom and doom forecast. Forecasts are always conservative, depending on the finance director and the city manager. It's non-risky in terms of we're not rolling the dice. It's calculated based on a very specific set of assumptions, right? So in the past, we have, in good times, we have held on to our reserves, we've built up our reserves. During slow economic times, we've pulled out of our savings to get through those difficult turns. So what are the takeaways on this slide before I move forward? There are three main things to take away from this. If you look at the very last line on this slide, that's basically is the change or the impact of the expenditures, the net change to the fund balance. In approved budget, we adopted the approved budget, knowing that we're going to dip into the fund balance or reserves to pay for CIP. That's why you see a negative 6.3. But in the future years, if you look at every single one of those five years, we have targeted, based on our assumptions, that every single one of those years, we will protect and preserve our impact on our fund balance for the general fund. So the key takeaways, we're preserving fund balance or reserves over the forecast period. We're tapering back on cash funding of CIPs. And we're targeting positive change in fund balance every single one of those years. So this was piece number two of our building block. Now let's go to the final building block, the bottom line. This is our projected fund balance. So the city charter and our financial policy that the city council adopted states that 25% of your annual operating expenses, your fund balance must be equal to or above 25% of your annual operating expenses, period. There is no gray, there is no green, there is no yellow. It's a target we have to meet. So on this last slide, I'm trying to show you, the first line in bold, what is our estimated projected fund balance in the general fund in each one of those five years? what is our estimated projected fund balance in the general fund in each one of those five years? Then the line right below shows you what the policy requirement requires that we must have in our fund balance. The line after that shows you whether we have excess or shortage in meeting the fund balance requirement. And then, and lastly, what is the percentage that we have exceeded the city policy for fund balance requirement? So let me take year number one, for example. Our projected or estimated fund balance in year number one is 18.4 million dollars. The policy requires we keep it at 25%. That's 16.9 million dollars. So we have a surplus of 1.5 million or 8.73%. And every single year thereafter, we have targeted to maintain that internal target of at least 1.5 million dollar surplus cushion between what is the policy requires and where we think we should be to give us that extra, slightly extra conservative cushion. So the three takeaways are, we're preserving fund balance in every single one of those five year projections. Each fiscal year, the fund balance is above the policy requirement. And it's not by 1% or 2%. We're in the neighborhood of almost 9%, 8 to 9% each year. And we're targeting 1.5 million dollars as a financial target to stay above the minimum fund balance requirement. Because we know things will change. We know our projections will change on sales tax, property tax, other revenues. We know our projections on expenditures might change. So it is always best in a conservative position to take that will not be just right on the dot or bubble. We'll be on the good side, better. So I gave you the three building blocks, and now this is what it looks like all put together. Lot of numbers and rows, but the main thing to, to concentrate all focus on is the last two light blue lines, the fund balance in excess of policy requirement. So with that, I'm going to move to my last slide, slide number 20. Next steps in the budget development process. This is just to give you an overview of what's coming up, next steps. I've highlighted the three dates that we are tentatively scheduled to meet on the weekend, Saturday, 8 o'clock sharp. Departments, May, June, departments will be finalizing proposed budget and reviewing their proposal with the city manager. June 7th, we have Parks and Recreation, Transportation and Public Works Department, and Water Utilities, who will be presenting their preliminary budget plans to city council and their CIP. July 25th is the deadline for the Hays Chief Appraiser to give us our certified tax roll. July 26th, city manager will be presenting his recommended budget to city council. Then August 16th, staff will be back to talk about debt obligation, future bonds, and property tax rates, what they look like based on now the certified tax roll we'll have by then. Then September 2nd is our public hearing, first reading of budget and tax rate ordinances. And then finally, on September 16th, we'll wrap up with the second round of public hearings and the second reading of budget and tax rates. With that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Not a question. I had, coming into this budget session, I know that we are looking at some contraction in the economy, some definite uncertainty in sales tax, especially with people cutting back on their purchases. My question coming into this was how conservative are our assumptions, both in revenue and in expenses? And I would like to say that you have done a marvelous job in assuring me that you have been very careful in those assumptions and that what we are looking at in the next five year have, are not outrageous assumptions at all that they take into consideration all of the facts that are happening in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, and it's not just me alone by myself. The city manager has helped me in coming up with these reasonable assumptions. So that has helped and the entire finance team in the back.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to thank, first of all, thank Pervez and the team for putting this together. But secondly, as we kind of go through, this is again, our first real meeting of the budget process, our first Saturday that we're doing this. We've outlined a number of different discussions that we're going to be having over the next few months. The intent of these is to get your feedback as a collective group of things that you want to see, concerns you have, initiatives that you want to make sure are addressed in the budget. When I present my budget recommendation to you at the end of July, there should be no surprises in that. All of these are the things we've talked about with you, issues that have been discussed. Again, we encourage you to ask questions and give us any feedback that you have as we go through it. And then by the time you get to the September periods of you're actually taking votes on the budget, these are things that you've talked about many times. Positions are well established on what we've looked at. Alternatives have been discussed with the group. And so again, no surprises for us bringing things forward to you that over the next few months, we really want to get good feedback from you so we can develop a budget that matches the goals that you have. So again, as we go through these, I just encourage any questions, any feedback that you want to have, let us know. We'll be happy to bring you alternatives and other information as you look at it. It's, I know it's a lot of information, especially early on a Saturday, but we'll have lots of coffee at every one of these. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the other things too that we have to consider are the actions of the legislature. And we were up against a very bad bill that would have severely limited our bonding potential. I think that died. And so that, that was a great relief for us. So that, I hope.
Great point, yes.
Will relieve us some, thank you.
Yeah, it kind of sounds like what you're saying, Brian, is if there's an ask right now of council as we're going to the departments, it's go and do it, or at least not wait till the last minute so that way we could budget and figure it out strategically. So I think I'm full on board on that, and that's a great plan. And Perez, thank you and your team for all that you did. You know, I've been through several of these with you now through the years. And it seems like every time I, I think I know everything, you teach me something new. So thank you, I enjoy learning, and thank you for all that you do for us, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you. Y'all want to do comp next, or you want to take a break? All right, let's do a 10 minute break, so we will reconvene at 9:50. Be here or be square. This is agenda item three, receive report, discussion, staff direction on comp and benefits plan. Ms. Truelove.
Good morning again. Excited to be here to talk about comp and benefits. We will go over just some general organizations. So to refamiliarize everyone for where human resources is within our organization, talk about what we've done in '25, we'll look at some metrics and highlights, finishing up with our '26 objectives. So this is the organization structure for administrative services and HR is part of administrative services. I serve as the director, Julie Beggs is our assistant director. She, you're going to get to hear from her tonight, or this afternoon, rather, this morning, rather, to talk a little bit more about some of the specifics in HR. We're really lucky to have Julie as part of our team. She's a 14-year executive with Pardon House Electric in the city of Austin over human resources issues. And then we have a good staff of folks serving as HR business partners, payroll administrator. We have a new comp and benefit specialist that just started this week. And then Gabriella Madrona, who's helping us with general administrative work. So some things that we are proud of in 2025. Some of this may not feel big and, and exciting, but for us internally, it's really big and exciting. We have established a position control schedule so we can monitor positions citywide. We've standardized our recruitment processes and have been training staff on how to lead those recruitments. We've adopted our first ever wage scale for the city of Kyle. Julie's going to talk a little bit about that in her part of the presentation, but this is a big deal to have a, a good established compensation philosophy and wage scale for our workforce. Associated with that, we had to, to conduct a number of equity-based salary adjustments to standardize our compensation philosophy. We also initiated a classification, a classification study with planned adoption in 2026. This is going to give us standardized job descriptions, qualifications, required certifications. And again, Julie will talk about this a bit more in her part of the presentation. We have a new benefits consultant. That contract came through y'all a number of months ago, and we're very excited about how we're going to reshape benefits in the coming years for the, the employees of the city of Kyle. We have launched, as of last week, our new carrier for our deferred compensation plan for the city of Kyle. So we went through a whole competitive process to bring in a new carrier and have completed that transition. It should, the plan should come out of blackout in the next couple of days. That's a very exciting move for our workforce. We have begun implementation of our new human resources information system. We have done a lot with employee engagement and recognition, some of which we talked about with the core values discussion. And we have, hopefully, with the adoption of the budget this year, we'll have a new set of core values for our organization. And then we are working to simplify our employee policies and processes for '26 adoption. That's our personnel policy book. So we want to talk a little bit about what we've done for employee recognition. This is one that we think is really important. We continue to, on a monthly basis, recognize folks with birthdays. We recognize their anniversaries. We conduct quarterly town halls with our city manager where we're going out and visiting all of our work sites and providing just general overview information about what's going on with the city. We, we pulled together that employee engagement committee, which we talked about during the core values. We had our annual lunch for Thanksgiving for staff appreciation, and we had our holiday event at TDS. We also spent time back in November, having a really dedicated week to talk about benefits and bring in our benefit providers and provide more substantive information on our benefit providers, our retirement planning back in November for open enrollment. And then we did that again as part of our public service week this past, at the beginning of May, where we spent a week going office to office almost, or facility to facility, recognizing and thanking our workforce. So we're really excited about all of that. Going into next year, we're going to use our employee engagement committee to help us be a little bit more defined and, and organized around our employee engagement and recognition. And that could be up to and including changing some of the annual events that we've done. We've, we've had the, the winter party at TDS for a number of years. Have the Thanksgiving luncheon that we do for staff at St. Anthony's. And I think all of that is on the table as we re-envision how our workforce wants to be recognized. And we plan to bring that plan back to you guys in probably September. So as a philosophy, we want HR to serve as a resource and a partner in the organization. We want to provide excellent customer service and be incredibly responsive. Our goal is to build internal processes. We want to streamline operations and provide oversight on regulatory controls. This year, as a city, we streamlined the operations for the water utility and public works. And you'll hear more about that at your next budget session. We've created the new transportation and public works department as a standalone department. We have filled a lot of key leadership positions, some of which are in the room today, which has been a tremendous work, a body of work for the HR team, but that we're building a really strong team for the, the workforce in Kyle that we're excited about. As far as an overview or summary of our workforce, right now we have 439 authorized full-time positions. Not all of them are filled. In 2025, in this fiscal year, we have on-boarded 116 positions. That's almost one a day, I think, as we looked at on average. We have right now 44 seasonal employees. We have 383 employees enrolled in our healthcare system. 223 is employee only, and the rest having some form of, of spousal or, or dependent coverage. I want to turn it over now to Julie, who's going to walk through some of our key performance metrics that we use to kind of gauge the effectiveness of our work in human resources for the city of Kyle. Julie?
Good morning, everyone. I'm thrilled to be here. Julie Beggs, Assistant Director of Administrative Services, leading the Human Resources Division. I get to talk to you about what ACM Elizondo shared with our strategic plan that you've adopted. So the water utility techs, the accountants, the videographers, the librarians that are making that happen. So let's jump in a little bit about how we're performing, what we're measuring, and how we compare to our benchmark cities. The first statistic I want to show you is the vacancy rate. Vacancy rate is important because it illustrates to you the efficiency at which we are recruiting, and we are taking the authorized positions and getting those filled so that the operations will not be impeded anyway. The goal in our strategic plan is to be lower than 10%. This is much like golf, you want a low number, low numbers are better. Right now, we're currently at 9.9. However, projections, because we have interviewed and recruited and made extended offers to applicants, we anticipate by the first part of June, that number will hover more around 7.6%. So we're well on trend, excuse me, to achieve those numbers. The next number I want to share with you, excuse me, is our turnover rate. Turnover rate is important because it's an indicator of organizational health. How are people leaving? Thank you. How, how, what, at what percentage are people leaving? Thank you, Rosie. And again, want this number to be low because this could be voluntary or involuntary separations from the organizations, retirements. You will see on the lookback that we've hovered between 10 and 15%. Currently, we're much lower, but again, this is a calendar year only, so this is only five months of data. That number will increase a little bit as we continue to go through the calendar year. Recruitment metrics, you heard Rosie say onboarding, that does include our seasonal. We hire about 45 seasonal for our spring camps and our lifeguards. But we have done classification reviews or reclassification of positions, about 121 as of a week ago. Those are important because when an individual comes into the organization, we want to look at their experience, their applicable education, expertise, what they bring to the table for that job of what we've recruited. So 121 individual units since October 1. And I'm using October 1 here because I think it's important to note that essentially the entire HR team turned over. So as of October 1, we've had basically a brand new team come into the organization, learn the organization, learn the processes, learn the people, and learn the operations and what the objectives are. Number of job opportunities, we've had 123 postings on our website for employment with the city of Kyle and almost 4,000 online applications this year alone, this fiscal year. Our average days to hire, I'm very proud of this number, is 82. Our peer cities are sitting on average at about 140 days. So we're moving very quickly, but I would like to say to you, we accept the challenge to bring this back to you next year to be closer to 65 to 70. I think there are improvements we can gain here, and I think we've got a team that can do it. Our compensation philosophy, again, I want to remind it, I think we brought this last year. We want to be a premier employer in the region, and we're dedicated to making sure that our positions, our compensation, our benefits are strong, and they're attractive to those candidates that are looking for employment in this area. We do have wage scales now. As Rosie mentioned, it's the first time Kyle has gone through this exercise to look at the market and what the market is paying. And so we have a wage scale made up of pay grades. And within those pay grades, we will see movement and also job families. So if I want to be an administrative assistant, but then I want to move it to the specialist, and then administrative senior, I can see those progressions now. We hope to like codify those next month when we complete our classification plan, which I'll discuss momentarily. I've also provided to you our peer cities, as you're familiar with. Those are those cities that we benchmark against to make sure that we are competitive. And we also want to make sure, again, that we have progression opportunities. We have a lot of jobs that have great potential for growth that we want to offer employers because we like that, that onsite training, but we want them to be able to develop and grow their income as well and stay. We want to retain that talent here because it's incredibly expensive to rehire, retrain, and repost.
Julie, how do you get your data on like, you know, turnover or days to hire from the peer cities?
We, we track that, and we have a system that also benchmarks our peer cities. So we do that comparative with NeoGov.
Okay. Is, but I'm just.
We have all that in our system. So we have an online platform, and all that data is collected based on when we launch a posting, and then when it closes to hire.
For, for your, for the peer cities?
Yes, yes.
Julie, just on the, the.
Julie, just on the compensation, when we're looking at training, are we looking at training from the ground up? That means every department, that means at every scale, you know, from our boots on the ground to people in the office. Are we looking at every bit of training that, like, say we got somebody on the road crew, and they completed a piece of training on equipment, things like that? Are we compensating? Because I just want to make sure that we're not training and losing these individuals because it's very important to keep, you know, train people on staff. So making sure we're looking at all levels.
Thank you for that question. Great question. So we have a few jobs that require certifications or may require additional technical expertise. CDL, for example, is a great example. We have a lot of jobs that require that. But we also provide the training in-house so that you could get your CDL. And we will pay for that training because it's quite expensive. And so a CDL, water operator license, wastewater licenses, all of those, we will provide that training, encourage you to get that training. And in many times, it may be a promotional opportunity or a certification pay stipend that you would receive. Any other questions? Okay. Our compensation philosophy has changed a little bit over prior administrations. We had a policy in place that mandated that anyone coming into a position was hired at the minimum of that grade, regardless of experience or education. What we have done over the last year, since October 1, is when an applicant comes to the table, we look again at all their education, their applicable experience, their expertise they have in the job, required certifications or training they may have, and we base that on the pay grades that we now have. And so we have minimums of each job. We have the midpoint of each job, and we have the maximum that a job would pay based on market data and based on the market data we've received over the last year creating our wage scale. So we now have, I think there are 17 pay grades in the city of Kyle. That includes general and executive. We expect there might be some minor changes that we'll see when we get our classification study. Compensation looks solely at base wages in the market. So classification is base wage. I mean, compensation is base wage. Classification looks at that job description. And that's the process we're going into right now. We expect the results next month. Those two mirrored together will give you a true compensation philosophy and overview of how your organization's doing. It's important to state that no one was negatively impacted by the wage scales. So no one's wage went down. We had about four individuals who were not at the minimum of their pay grade, and we immediately rose them to the minimum because it would be, in our opinion, unethical to have somebody below a wage grade where we know the market is paying for that job. So no one was negatively impacted when we launched the wage scale earlier this year. Classification, again, looks at our job descriptions. Those job descriptions include kind of the overview of what the job does, how it's important to the organization, minimum qualification that one must hold to have that job, preferred qualifications or other things, knowledge, skills, abilities, required education. So in April, this council, with great support, authorized us to amend the contract with a vendor who did the compensation study, and they led us through the classification study. We completed it last week. And what that means is that each employee had the opportunity go through and evaluate their job description, provide analysis on it, complete a questionnaire, then their supervisor got to review it, and their supervisor supervisor, so that everybody was in alignment and in agreement. We have some job descriptions that had not been updated for more than five years, and the work has certainly changed, and the expectations of the work has changed. So it was a tedious exercise, I would say, but it was a great exercise for us to go through so that we could capture what certifications we require, what progression opportunities are available, and what families look like as far as administrative, technical, executive, those with specific requirements that cannot be substituted. I use Amy, for example. As much as we would, might like anybody else that's here, if they do not have a law degree, we cannot make that substitution for our city attorney. We would not want Leon not to be a PE for our city engineer. So those kind of things are captured with a classification study. We anticipate the results the third week of June. There might be a few modifications, but we've worked with our finance team to make those, those projections in the budget for FY '26. Generally, what you will see, or we anticipate that we would bring forward to you with the city manager's budget, an average 3.5% merit increase for our general workforce. We might have, again, a few equity adjustments based on the classification scale and where jobs move. Based on how those job descriptions come in, again, compared to our market and our region, we might see some growth just because of the industry. Years ago, as you'll recall, we saw a lot of movement in IT fields. They were moving quite a bit because some of them were oversaturated or some not at all. Cybersecurity, for example, was a really hot topic, and it pinged to the very height of most markets. Now it's kind of stabilized, so we don't see that moving as much, but we might see a few of our jobs, so we want to plan for that. But as mentioned earlier, that through meet and confer agreements, we'll see about a 1.1 impact for wages and benefits for our sworn officers. And then we'll take also a look at our health insurance costs that we are making a projection that we'll see an increase in that area. We wanted to provide for you just an overview of what the merit increase history has been for the city of Kyle. They've been pretty flat, about 3.5% until '22, '23, when a general 20% cost of living adjustment, or COLA, was initiated unilaterally to all employees within the organization. This year, there were a few equity adjustments associated with a compensation study. And again, as I've mentioned, we're projecting a slight nominal adjustments that might be needed in association with the classification study that we'll receive next month. As far as benefits, again, with your support last month, you authorized on consent, an agreement with McGriff Consulting, to look at our benefits to make sure that not only that we're competitive, but as a city, that we're getting the best rate, and we're, we're getting good use out of our monies when we go into contracts with health benefits. We are looking right now, we met with McGriff actually this week, and looked at utilization records, what our claims are, what are any anticipated costs that could be concerning. We are projecting, and they are projecting, that we may see an increase between 11 and 14%. Of course, they will negotiate on our behalf, so we'll have the final number closer to a budget adoption. This year, for those that have dependent coverage, we anticipate that we may have to pass on anywhere from a 5 to 6 increase to them to cover that. Again, as has been mentioned already, the city covers 100% employee coverage, but we have about 180 families that cover some kind of dependent, whether that's a spouse, children, or both. Let me show you that usage slide now. You can see, again, 223 of our employees take full advantage of coverage that is 100% paid by the city. And then about 180 cover spouse, children, or both. If they did about a 5%, for example, as a family, right now they're paying about $425 a month. That means they would see about a $20 increase per month to their paycheck deduction. And then we wanted to show you, because last year we brought to you a couple of new policies, so we wanted to let you know how they're, how they're being used. One was the paid parental leave, which has been overwhelmingly successful. Your employees have been very appreciative of this extension of leave while they are welcoming a newborn to their family or adoption or, and we've had about 16 employees take, participate in the paid parental leave. As well as, our employees have taken advantage of furthering their own education. We've had eight employees who are taking advantage of our tuition reimbursement. As you recall, we expanded that and increased those dollars last year, almost doubled them. So the maximum annual benefit to them is $4,000 a year, and we've had eight employees take advantage of that. With that, if there's no questions, I'll turn it back over to Rosie to talk about our FY '26 objectives as we look citywide for our employee base.
Thank you, Julie. So looking forward, Julie mentioned we anticipate about a 3.5% average merit increase, implementation of our classification study, and the meet and confer market adjustment. We are excited to, to hear that the vote just closed on the meet and confer agreement, and it, and it looks like it's, it's passed, and we're going to be bringing it forward on, not to June 3 council consideration, but June 17. We are hoping to get that done for June 3, but we are going to push that to June 17 for consideration of that.
I did hear this morning that almost 90% of the association voted to approve that contract. So it's very good news, and we'll be excited to present the details to you on the 17th.
Yeah. We are preparing for benefits for 2026. We are going to change our employee personnel policy and how we handle that. We're continuing our use of technology. I'm going to talk a little bit about a potential new safety program that we're, we're hoping will be approved in the budget, as well as give you an update on the high school internship program, staff development and wellness, and our employee recognition program. So for the city of Kyle, we have traditionally brought forward our personnel policy with, for adoption with the annual budget. This year, rather than taking the policy book that we've had for a number of years, we're going to change our approach to that, and we're going to get a new personnel policy book that will be strictly focused on compliance with state and federal employment law. And then any policies that are really applicable just to city of Kyle employees, we will handle that through a series of, that are non-statutory, will be handled through the city manager and his use of administrative directives so that we're able to allow him the opportunity to, to give his guidance on how we want to operate within the city of Kyle. This will ensure that we can make changes to those at the operational level, and we won't have to continuously bring back a policy book mid-year for consideration to council. So that will come forward with budget adoption later this year. We like to, we like to showcase how we're using technology. Julie did, gave some great information and statistics that we're able to pull out of our, our technology sources that we have. NeoGov is our human resources information system that we are implementing right now. We've been using NeoGov for recruitment and onboarding for a number of years, but we're, we're working on expanding that and having more modules so that we're able to really reflect and operate more efficiently. We're working with our friends in finance on the OpenGov budget transparency and the personnel module that you'll see later this year when we present the budget. And then we have new systems for employee evaluations, pre-employment screenings, bilingual testing, and process development that we're using to help ensure that your, your HR team here in Kyle is working as efficiently as possible. We are proposing a new safety program, a corporate safety program for this coming budget year. This is going to include potentially two staff members plus funding within our transportation and public works department for fleet-related safety equipment and facilities improvements to ensure that we are operating safely, as well as a budget that will be available for training, things like OSHA, first aid, CPR, bloodborne pathogens, and defensive driving. We are proposing two positions. One, a safety compliance officer and a safety compliance assistant, excuse me. We anticipate housing those out of administrative services with the goal of having that be a citywide initiative to cover all of our internal staff plus all of our frontline workers. The metrics that we would see on that, that we would be looking to, to track and to monitor, would include, hopefully, seeing reductions in workers' comp claims, vehicle accident rates, and near misses. And that program total, we would, would see at about 510,000, some in administrative services, general fund, and then cost shared across departments. But the equipment, the, for fleet-related and facility-related improvements would be out of the transportation and public works department.
Yes, no question on the compliance officer and assistant. Would y'all be considered maybe doing a in-house promotion on that?
It, it would be a competitive recruitment, and I think there are some folks within the city of Kyle that would be interested in that position, for sure. Yes, ma'am.
Rosie, can you tell us the number of employee accident incidents in the year?
Do we have that? Do you have that off the top of your head?
I don't, but we can get those numbers.
Do we know how many workers' comp claims were filed?
I did not have that number this morning, but I have that because we do track that.
Those, those are going to be my questions, too. Could we get some, some numbers to support the need for this?
Absolutely.
When I look at our city, there are some dangerous, like, I guess, sites, but I'm not sure that we're like in the medical field or like in an industrial field where you have safety compliance officers look at, you know, violations, like fire extinguishers, stuff like that. So I just want to make sure that it, it is something needed to promote safety and not just have a person, I guess, go to sites and find violations.
Well, it's not necessarily aimed at going to sites and finding violations. It's more aimed at helping to ensure that all of our workforce is operating safely, that we're offering training, that we're, that our facilities that we operate have appropriate safety mechanisms there for, you know, hazardous materials and things of that nature. Not necessarily going to find violations, but more working in support of a safe workforce.
Yep. I could see that, like, at the treatment plant, water plants, but since we're, like, in construction companies, you have these officers, OSHA. So I just want to make sure that we're doing it appropriately to-
Oh, absolutely.
-in our, in our city, and we're going pretty fast with the assistant and then, and then a supervisor. Like, do we, should we just start with one person before we start creating a staff and a new, you know, larger government positions?
Yeah, for sure. So just to be clear, this particular program, we, has been devised by a cross-departmental panel of folks. We, we brought together a safety compliance team that consists of line-level employees and supervisors from all of our front-facing workforces, parks, water, transportation, our street crews, folks at the water treatment plant, so that we can make sure that we're taking all of those perspectives into consideration. And this is actually the recommendation that's come forward from that team.
Yeah, I'm not saying no to this. I'm just saying I wanted to learn more about the need for it.
And, and one of the things it does is it creates policy, policy on safe, safety in the workforce, you know, the do's and don'ts. You know, sometimes we, you know, when people are out in the workforce, they continue to, what do you call it? Do things that might be easier or faster, right? But is it safer, right? So creating a policy, bringing something forward is always important. So it's, it's a great position.
We're excited about the potential.
If you can look at a current example we had the other night, we had an alarm go off while we were in the meeting. So having a specific person like that available, or not so much available, but to be able to look into that to where you can do regular fire alarm testing, you can look at all the fire extinguishers in the area, security. Whenever you have the fire marshal comes in, you have all your documentation done to where you can have, like what Councilmember is saying, you have a policy or a procedure in place to where you do monthly inspections, whether it's your buildings itself, whether it's the equipment, whether it's your vehicles, and just keeps everything up to par. Because in the event something does happen, we have all our record keeping in, in place. We can say we did this inspection. We can follow up if there's ever an accident or ever a building structure issue. We, that compliance officer would be able to address it to, whether it's OSHA, whether it's the fire marshal, whether, whatever issue may be, so.
So Amy is super helpful, and she pulled our workers' comp dashboard from TML. And I can say that we have, right now we have 30 open claims. We have about 10 more claims this year than we did the year before, and about 10 more claims last year than we did the year before that. So we definitely are seeing an increase in safety-related incidents that we want to work proactively to put some programming around to help ensure that we start to see that go down. Thank you, Amy. Anything else on safety? Okay.
That'd be great to where that person can then go back to each section, whether it's public works, whether it's parks, and you can, maybe they can implement some kind of program from within to develop training on how to use specific equipment and so forth to prevent some of these accidents.
That is exactly what we're looking to, to see. So the next budgetary impact programming that we're looking at is our high school internship program. We're excited to be working on this. We talked about this with you guys last December. Our program goals are really growing and developing leaders in our community. We have been actively facilitating conversations with our partners in Hays ISD. 2025 fall options with existing Hays application is what we're looking at. They have a program and we're going to, that exists already, and we're going to be participating in that with placements within the city of Kyle. These will be diverse opportunities that will hopefully be able to place students based on their interest. This will be during their school day, right? So it's, it's like they have a class period that's dedicated to an internship, and so we would be taking advantage of that, looking at either juniors or seniors, at least 17 years old. They're going to have to have reliable transportation. We are looking at a budgetary ask associated with this of about 18,000 for program administration. We don't foresee paying right now our interns because they are receiving school credit, and so we can't have that be on top of each other. But we're excited to get this program kicked off in the fall and to see where it grows over time.
Rosie?
Yes.
I just want to emphasize, this is, can be such a beneficial program in visiting with one of our wastewater employees some time ago. And I could be misremembering the conversation, so if she, if she- conversation, so if she, if she wants to correct me in the future, she can, but she was talking about how she came to this career. And she's got an advanced degree in it now and is so excited about what she's doing in wastewater, but it was through her experiences in an internship program very early on.
And we also have another employee at the police department who is a supervisor at the police department that came to us through a high school internship kind of scenario. So it's ve, it's very exciting, it's very exciting.
So just a question on the paid, not paid positions on internships. What were you saying on, on not being able to pay them for what reason?
Because it's part of their school curriculum. So they, they're fundamentally taking a class that is an internship class, and so they would be coming to us on school time. And part of the, the stipulations with this Hays program that we're going to be starting are, our internship program based off of, is that it's, they're getting school credit for it. And so if you're getting school credit for the internship, then
That's the key, right? There's school credit, okay. Because I know my daughter's looking at one with APD where she's actually getting paid and, but it's a summer program.
Yes, yes.
It's not during the school year, so I was wondering why we couldn't pay.
I'm very familiar with those programs in, in the city of Austin, and I think they're great. And that's something that we could potentially look at in the future, but we want to start by capitalizing on a program that's already in existence to give us a good pipeline.
And this is during the school year, it's not a summer program, so I understand. I appreciate it. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, of course.
Hey, Rosie, is there any way that we could look at trying to work this through Kayak to open up these opportunities for kids who
Sure, that's a great idea.
join Kayak? It's like a feeder program?
We can, they need to be, for, for what we have already been speaking with the school district about, they need to be part of that internship class that they take on their course schedule. I have two high schoolers, so I'm like up to my eyeballs in this stuff right now. But we can certainly talk to them and get some perspective on it, especially as we grow the program. I think it's a fantastic idea.
All right, thank you. It starts with their freshman year. I know in eighth grade, incoming freshmen, they already have to meet with counselors ahead of time. So by the time they hit their sophomore year, they should already have kind of an idea where the career is. So this is perfect because once they start their junior year, kind of what Council Reza was saying, you know, why we're not paying them is because it fits their, their career path, their diploma path, as far as like, you know, I'm going to go public works, or we're going to go maybe learn about law enforcement, or I'm going to learn about administration. A lot of those, it's like a new program that Hays ISD is starting to where they get the kids going as far as not, you know, not too much to college, but what career path, you know, that they want to go down. And so this would really, really help on that end.
And, and I think, you know, Kayak is a great avenue to help increase the visibility of this program and maybe increase the visibility of the, the Hays internship model just in general. So we'll definitely pursue that. So we will be wanting to talk a little bit this coming year about staff development and wellness. This is our opportunity to create some internal training programs for the city of Kyle, some about statutory things like FMLA or workplace violence or sexual harassment, and some about internal processes like procurement, hiring, software technology. We want employees to stay informed about workplace practices. We're recommending a combination of both formal instructor-led outsourced training and informal, more lunch and learn online type activities and modules that will, we will record and start to develop and build a reference library for new employees. We're looking at budgeting $50 per employee for 2026. We're estimating 450 employees. This is not, this is just for, we have 439 now. We anticipate there will be some growth. I'm not saying there's going to be 11 new employees that will be determined, but we're looking at a $50 per employee budget for this so that we can start to build and enhance the staff development. And then we're also looking at some wellness programs. This is coupled with the benefits discussions that we're having with McGriff and looking at how we can have a better sense of what is happening with our workforce and what we can do to support them in general, you know, kind of a whole person wellness type activity. Then we're also going to be looking at employee recognition. We talked a little bit about this earlier. We want to create a little bit more of a systematic way of recognizing employees where we have a budget of a set amount. We're recommending $65 per employee that will be used organizationally for, for recognition of employees at a department level, and then guidelines for departments, for departmental recognition, peer recognition, organizational recognition, all developed through our employee engagement committee. We anticipate citywide events will still occur, things like our Thanksgiving luncheon had great success with Public Service Recognition Week, or Public Service Appreciation Week in early, in early May. And we do want to continue to have an annual event, although whether it is a holiday party at TDS, whether it is some kind of picnic in the spring, or some other kind of event that's family-friendly, will be determined as we work with our employees and find out really what do they value in an employee recognition program. So just to summarize what we're looking at for citywide budget requests that really are centralized around compensation and benefits, we're looking at 629,000 there of an impact all funds for our HR consulting contract with McGriff, our citywide safety program, high school internship program, staff development and wellness, and employee recognition.
Rosie?
Yes, ma'am.
That contract with McGriff is not a continuing contract, right? It's just for this year?
It's, I would anticipate it would be a continuing contract.
Every year?
And we take that out of being paid by the insurance providers, and we pay it directly so that we're able to have more direct control over how they negotiate on our behalf and how we work with them.
So one thing I wanted to mention on that, the McGriff contract is related to our health insurance benefits that we provide. We're a fully insured model right now through United Healthcare. That's some of the rate increases that Rosie was looking at. One of the analysis that we're going to be doing with McGriff is looking at a self-funded model where we would not have a fully insured product. There's some stop-loss premiums that you can have to provide some protection to the city, but overall, we think that's a lower-cost plan. It gives us the same level of benefits at a lower cost, and the preliminary projection's around $400,000 per year in savings by going to that self-funded model. So it's trying to take that 11% to 14% increase in healthcare and try to see how you can lower that to a more sustainable level. And they're experts in helping us look at that. Health insurance plans are very complex and looking at all the different levers that you have to pull to manage that. And as part of the health and wellness program that Rosie mentioned, one of the things we can look at is trying to encourage people to be more healthy, which is certainly improves that employee's life and their family's life, but it also lowers the cost of the city. So rather than having not a lot of healthcare and not a lot of wellness activities for many years and then having some catastrophic health event that's very expensive and very difficult for the employee, to try to manage that better going forward. Right now, we're, we really don't have a good program around that, so we're going to be working on some of those ideas. We'll bring that back to you with lots of detailed discussion, but that's the kind of work McGriff does for us, is to help us look at that and try to understand how to best spend that $5 million a year. Where is it the best spent?
Self-insured certainly has a lot of risk to it that we don't have with full insurance, but you had mentioned there'd be a cap on loss.
Yep.
Have an insured cap.
Right.
And that's not, that's not something we're looking at for 2026. That's something that we're actively planning, we think, for 2027. So we'll have a nice long runway to get really good information on our current plan utilization and how we can design a program or a health plan that will be beneficial to our employees and to the city in general.
Right. I think we're, we're kind of looking at that for January 27. We'll have a lot of discussion with employees and then with the council about that, but we have about, I think my memory is about 700 to 800 different lives in the plan, so that's employees plus all of their dependents. So it's a lot of folks, and it's, it's complex. We'll be looking at it.
It's exciting. It's exciting to be able to, to find new ways to, to serve our workforce.
On one last note.
Yes.
When it comes to the training, will some of those be considered mandatory training?
Yes.
That goes into their EDF, correct?
Yes.
That's required, like the harassment, but not only that, but all the IT technology, the cybersecurity. Because I know that's where a lot of us have to have our mandatory yearly training, and it goes in our EDF, which is our employee development file.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's mandatory fun, is what it is.
Mandatory fun.
And, and one of the things that we'll have through our, our new HRIS is a, is a, a good e-learning way to track all of that and to keep those kind of records so that we, we have good access to them.
They can go online and take the class and get certified. Sounds good.
So we're excited and committed to making the city of Kyle a premier employer of choice in the region. So let us know if there's anything that we can answer, any questions, or services that we can provide.
Thank you, Rosie. Thank you, Julie. Appreciate y'all. All right, next up is Agenda Item 4, receive a report, hold discussion for our staff feedback regarding an overview of development services proposed budget for fiscal year 25, 26. Ms. McCollum is not chief.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've aged. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That's a cut, is what I call. That's called cutting. No cutsies.
I'm ready.
Got peels, got pulled over. Boo.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to kind of present the development services budget. I think Pervez really kind of set up a lot of stuff in his presentation to really kind of highlight how development services works. And really, it is the building code enforcement and planning divisions of kind of development services. I did not do this budget alone. I want to say Kelly Stole is here. Thank you, Kelly, for coming, and Jason Lutz, kind of overseeing our planning, really kind of helped put this budget together. And I think we've really refined and honed in on some of our forecasting, which you'll see. And again, development services really is at the beginning of the development process for planning. You're looking at development agreements, zoning changes, building, you know, then they do the infrastructure and kind of acceptance of some of those construction planning elements. Building really comes in at the middle of that development process, and then code compliance really is at the end. And honestly, development services is really where all the development fees come in. So when you're looking at parkland dedication and improvement fees, as well as associated lane mile ALM fees, all of that kind of comes in, and we're the powerhouse of, of getting all those fees in, into us for acceptance. So I've really kind of tracked everyone on, on the, the team, is really kind of looking at how we can continue to, to not only benchmark our fees as we've been doing, we raised those last year, we are proposing a couple fee amendments that I'll highlight at the end of the slides, but then really kind of looking at, really honing in on some of those projections. So I'm actually going to do this slide first and then go back and kind of show, this map really kind of shows our actual, the blue graph represents the fees or the revenues that we have brought in to the city for the, you know, the previous fiscal years. And then the last two are really 24, 25, what we're projecting this year, and then what we're proposing for next year. And you can see kind of projecting of this year and next year are kind of flattening out, which really kind of hone in and shown what Pervez was talking about in his kind of slides on where we're at forecasting. And then these slides really kind of show city lots and ETJ lots. That's just kind of a metric of, you can see subdivisions that are coming in, new lots that are coming in, which turn into a building permits, honestly, coming in. So you can kind of see where we've at of those. And again, that development cycle takes a while, too. A whole development, as Pervez was talking about, really is 18 to 24 months. So when you're looking at a new subdivision coming in, you're not pulling building permits for those, honestly, until a year or two later sometimes on those. So then that really kind of also forecasts in to where those commercial permits and residential permits come online. So this is in direct relationship to really those city lots and ETJ lots coming online, and then honestly, for those building permits coming online as well. And I will say, our, our buildings department does do a lot of building permits in our ETJ as well, based on agreements that we have for development agreements and some of the mud consent agreements and different things that we have coming on. So even though those lots might not necessarily be in the city limits, we are still doing full inspections for those. So that really kind of showcases and highlights our inspection staff that we have as well. So I wanted to really kind of talk about some great successes that we've had in the development services department. With your support, we have hired and have a full inspection staff on our inspections team, so we are able to perform 98 to 100% of our inspections in-house and looking at continuing that next year. And with that, we have really reduced our contractual expenses that we've had for that because we're not hiring them out. So we do still have some contractual inspections that we do for plan review, but true boots on the ground, that's city of Kyle staff that is out there doing inspections at all of our job sites, and that's both for commercial and residential. We brought our code enforcement friends over. They have finally moved into City Hall. That was kind of a reorg a couple of years ago. They were part of the police department, but now they're fully integrated over at, over with us here at development services. And this year, too, Kelly has worked with a building code effectiveness grading score. It's kind of an ISO insurance rating score. Honestly, Kyle hadn't participated before, so we had, you know, an audit number of 99, and he's really reduced that down to four. So that's a huge potential insurance cost saving for our residents, knowing what those insurance services office are potentially on their homeowner's insurance. This year, too, a new success with us, we did that pilot program with Habitat for Humanity to do that home repair program. We are, two have been completed. We allocated for three homes this year for that program, and we do have some insight that that program's been very beneficial and are bringing, asking for a supplemental budget to potentially increase that for next year. And again, Kelly, with all those hires, has really trained them as well, which you could kind of see highlighted with some of the HR stuff, is, is bringing those state board of plumbing inspector, that's like the huge license that everyone needs to do, accommodation building inspector, and, and six out of our seven inspectors have that. So that's huge that we are able to have inspectors. You don't have to really allocate and go, well, only this guy can go to that site for that plumbing inspection because he has it. We really have been able to, to highlight that and, and have those training.
Melissa, with the property improvement program, do you think moving forward, we could, you know, like have more documentation of what it is we're doing so everyone can see it? So not just, because I saw some pictures before and after, but maybe like video, something that's a little more illustrative of the work?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. So 311 came out in March, and I'll have a future slide, but when in doubt, code enforcement is your department that you'll have kind of helping with a 311 complaint or kind of identification. So you will see that code enforcement has really stepped up to a lot of those complaints or observations from our residents in that 311 program. New also successes this year is our downtown master plan. We're really kind of helping refine and hone in on that block by block. I'm excited about some of the opportunities that we'll be doing that for next year. For project tracking software, we instituted Achieve It this year, where, which will help us with our master plans, really kind of point out those goals and objectives and seeing that we're meeting those. So we're looking at continuing to utilize that and bring in some of our development agreements and different things. Our department's also led the roundabouts and gateways approach. We're excited about that project. The wireless transmission facilities, looking at site selections and partnerships with those to make sure that our residents have better mobile and cell coverage. We have just kicked off recently our unified development code. They'll actually be coming back, though we just had a quick planning zoning commission meeting to kind of get some stakeholder input early. They're actually going to be coming to council to get some additional stakeholder input on that process, but that will really be something that's implemented more next year as we continue to go through that process. We've also kicked off the housing study. That, too, will be something that's continuing on to this next fiscal year as well to really kind of making sure that we're meeting some of our housing goals. And then another, I think, feather in our cap for this year was really code enforcement. You know, actually outlined it very well with our citizen survey. It exceeded both the Texas and national average on our citizen survey satisfaction. And this year is our first year for our CDBG entitlement city with current HUD monies. So we got 266 this year that we're looking at using for some sidewalk and ramp improvements, which we're still looking to spend. And we've already been shown what our allocation is for next year, which is at 277,000. We are asking for some contractual support as a supplemental in this year's budget to get some help for that.
Hey, real quick, where are we with the code rewrite, just progress-wise? And then also with the housing study, when do you anticipate us having some actionable information?
Yeah, so for the code rewrite, we have signed the contract. We're, they're doing this diagnostic implementation on us. We met with PNZ. We're actually meeting with the Economic Development Board this next week, and then we're going to be coming back to, to council to get some initial feedback on that to make sure we're kind of hitting the mark. to make sure we're kind of hitting the marks. So we're at the very beginning of that code rewrite process. For the housing study, I would say similar on that, too. For that, we're getting, going to start doing some stakeholder engagements and meetings, and we're going to be coming back with that on some of that feedback, too.
Thank you.
And Brian, with the code rewrite, do we get that way in advance, like say months in advance, or are we going to get it three days before the meeting? I definitely want time to look at it.
No, absolutely. We're going to be bringing that back, I believe, June 17th, if I remember correctly.
Maybe even in July, but I would say, right now, we're asking for initial feedback. It's not the actual rewrite of that code, but when we get to that point, we're truly seeing some of the code rewrite, yes, we're going to give you ample time to really look and explore that.
So June 17th, we expect to have a briefing to you to outline the process that we're going to go through. It's about a year-long process. You'll have many bites at that apple as we go through it. P&amp;Z will also be involved in having many opportunities to provide feedback as we get into the details of rewriting these individual sections. Yes, sir.
If I could add real quick, with a combination of P&amp;Z and us, would it be a consideration to have a combination meeting when we start dissecting that? To start adding in the feedback with Sarah and her group, us on the other side of the table, and just dissect each and live a little thing before we finalize any kind of plan of action, so we can hear from all sides? Would that be a consideration?
I've done those with councils and P&amp;Z commissions in the past. I think as we go, I don't think the first couple of those is the right way to do it, but as we get a little further in and we're talking about specifics, yes, sir.
They can have their meeting with their feedback. We can have ours, and then we just combine together.
Yes, sir.
And then come up with a plan, and then we bring it to council for.
Yes, sir. We could look at having a special meeting for that.
Because we've been waiting a long time for the rewrite.
We're excited as well, for sure. It's the engineering manual, too. It's going to be so great. Other continued successes, you know, really Development Services. We have, you know, five boards and commissions that we regularly interact with. So when you're thinking about our staff reports and our meetings and our presentations and our notifications, we're doing, you know, kind of 80-plus meetings per year in staff reports that we're presenting for that. Kelly's been really on with his crew and making sure that, you know, building mechanical and all of our inspections and trainings and certifications for our, our building inspectors is online, as well as our code enforcement personnel. And code enforcement's really been updating their procedural manual as well to make sure that we're kind of in the line in standardizing those processes and making sure that we're kind of showcasing what code enforcement is doing. Also, we continue to benchmark our, with those same cities, that was outlined in Julie's presentation for our fees. We're proposing a couple amendments for that this year, and our planners have continued to maintain our EPA excellence award. And with all of the developments that we have in coming online, you know, we also did the new TERS number six, as well as TERS number four. So we were involved with helping get those across the finish line as well. And that's in addition to just kind of our everyday workload, which, you know, we've processed over 3,800 permits this year, are planning on 28,000 inspections. And our planning review not only reviews building, but kind of planning applications and really looking at those as well. So next slide kind of showcases the 3-1-1 and kind of our code enforcement by the numbers. The orange anomaly really kind of highlights some of the water cases that we were using for our drought, when we were in the drought tolerance. But you can see, this is really kind of showcasing just code enforcement cases that were received, and that when we hit kind of March and April of this year, our code enforcement cases have gone up. So with that, for this next budget year, kind of our project approach for that is we currently have three personnel within our code enforcement department. We're looking at reorganizing that a little bit to kind of have all those personnel be able to be officers out in the field, to be able to really look at those and kind of close those out. Building departments again by the numbers. So the left slide will follow consistent with the previous slides, with our actual numbers that we had for total permit issues, and then kind of projected of where we're at for this fiscal year and then what we're proposing for next fiscal year. And you can see, this kind of showcases also what was highlighted before. We're really looking at pretty flat for this year and next year, although we will still have plenty of applications to review.
What is the breakdown of the single family? And I know in our comp plan, there's a couple of different options for what single family can be. Do we have a breakdown? I mean, is this all like large lots? Or is?
So this would be all single-family product type. So, and this would be honestly probably townhomes as well. We can break that down a little bit further, but I will say the majority of this is still single-family residential.
So would it be possible, just over the next couple of weeks, to take a look at maybe the last couple of years? And if we compare it to the, I think it's page 87 of the comp plan, where we have the four or five different product types that could fall under single-family? Can we get a breakdown of what, how we're diversifying the options that fall into the single-family umbrella?
Yes, like versus townhomes and like, yep.
Exactly.
Yep, we can do that. But this single-family number, just so you know, is conclusive of all of that. So it includes the townhomes. This slide really just showcases honestly the number of inspections performed. So going from bottom to top, on this one is actual versus projected and proposed. You can see that we're still boots on the ground inspections-wise. We still have inspectors out in the field and performing those inspections. And again, we're really lucky to have our people on board, but if our developers and home builders call in for inspections by 2:00 PM, which is kind of the cutoff, there's 98, almost 100% chance that they'll, they'll be out next day inspecting. So we're very responsive to the development community on performing those inspections out in the field.
That's really good. I mean, time-wise, that's amazing. Even two days after the call-in is great. I mean, I've been involved in some inspections where I've got to leave somebody there for a week, hoping they show up, you know? So to have that response is really awesome. Great job.
No, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to bring some of those people in-house. It's really been able to help with our responsiveness. This next slide kind of showcases again, building from bottom to top with our actual. This is really highlighting what our contractual was blue. So when we were contracting out, our personnel is the orange and kind of commodity slide. So you can see contractual, you know, and then the blue line at the top is really when we started bringing people in-house. So you can see that fluctuated from contractual to personnel. But we've still been able to reduce the average cost for inspections by almost 40%. And we're still way lower on the cost per permit, excuse me, between even what we were in fiscal year 2021 by bringing those people in-house. So we, with that 950,000 savings on that contractual by bringing those personnel in-house. So we've had some cost savings overall in the building department, which, even though we didn't make our projected numbers that you saw with Pervez was showing, this is kind of a highlight of how we've been able to save some of those costs. So switching over kind of to more development applications, when you're looking at construction plans, site development permits and subdivisions. So subdivisions are kind of at the beginning of the process, and those are new land divisions or lots that are coming online. Those get reviewed by our planning zoning commission. Construction plans is truly like when you're going out into the field to build the roads, the infrastructure, the water and sewer lines. And then site development plans are truly when you're looking at buildings going on the ground. So you can see kind of 21, '22 is our height of that development process. You know, you had a lot of construction, a lot of subdivision coming online, and it has tapered off. So your, you know, subdivision and construction plans are probably a year out in front of when you're going to get those site development permits. And you can see, we're projecting for this next fiscal year to kind of be consistent with where we're at currently with our projections. This next slide kind of showcases the other kind of application cycles. So this is more of your annexations, maybe your variance cases that are going to board of adjustments, or conditional use permits that are planning zoning commission reviews, and those are for projects within our overlay. Development agreements that you see, which again are usually a year or two out from true construction as well, and our zoning cases. And you can kind of see where those have fluctuated, where again, 21, '22, kind of the height of that was huge for the conditional use permits, as well as development agreements, you know, that were coming in, and then where zoning applications. So we're looking a little flat for projected this year and proposed for next year. And again, those are honestly a year to in advance of truly even when your subdivision comes in, as well as your construction plans and site development, too. This slide really looks at some of our market trends related to development applications. So administrative applications that our planning, kind of planners see are truly like zoning verification letters, or even, you know, some stuff that we can do internally in-house that don't need board and commission consideration, where everything in the orange is really kind of highlighted. It's conditional use permits that we see coming online, or variances, or other applications that need board and commission consideration, where development would be your subdivision, your site plans, things that need constant kind of multiple reviews coming in for that. What's highlighted in yellow or the orange slide there is really kind of days in review. We had been kind of consistent with our days in review. You can see that that's exceeded this year, and those are really related to your development applications. So those are subdivisions and site plans primarily. We are one planner down in our current, we just had one left and one got promoted, which is exciting for that, but we are one FTE down, not hired right now. And we are looking at wanting to fill that position and really kind of hone in on this development review and work to really bring it, bring it back down to hopefully kind of this 18-day development review, application cycle of review.
Could I ask if a PID and PUDs are reviewed? I think I've asked this before, that it doesn't cost the city because it's being paid through, I guess, the assessments. But are PID and PUDs reviewed here?
Yes. So PIDS are Public Improvement Districts, which is more of a financing tool, and we accept EBSGROW fees as well as an application for that. And we do use some of our third-party to help analyze some of the financing mechanisms and tools for that. So we do get fees for that as well. PUDs are truly a zoning application, and those do get reviewed in-house, and we have fees associated with that as well.
Okay. So I guess, as more specific, the PID, it does get reviewed? It gets charged for the time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So some of the challenges, which first couple bullet points really kind of highlight what Pervez was saying, you know, even Redfin, as well as everyone else, is really kind of highlighting some of the slowdown in development application and review. Again, it's not so doom and gloom, though, because as you can see, we're still reviewing a lot of permits and applications. It's just not gangbusters like it was 21, '22 and after, you know? Also, planning and building are constantly looking at state legislation and changes that they have going for that. You know, when you're looking at shop clocks, they are proposing some amendments for accessory dwelling units this year, you know, really kind of looking at the ETJ and some of those ETJ releases and mandating some third-party reviews, kind of options for that. So we're constantly looking at modifying and revising some of our processes, as well as fees and different things to be associated with those challenges as well. Another thing challenging is our current permitting software that we utilize honestly for development applications, but we also use it for code enforcement. It's used for public works and engineering on kind of theirs, and is identified in our strategic plan goal. You know, it's hard to do some metrics, honestly, sometimes, that really link in well with our open gov. So one of our supplementals that we do have is really looking at potentially upgrading our permitting software that would be more in line with where we're headed and where we want to go with some of our application processing and review.
Could I jump in again?
Yep.
Something came to my mind. So like when subdivisions are completed, who reviews, I guess, when we accept the subdivision as-is? Like who's reviewing that, the engineering part of it? And how do we charge that as a city?
So subdivision reviews are.
That's like Leon's department, but.
It is.
How do we charge that?
So Development Services does charge for that at the beginning. It's called construction, construction review and construction inspection. So it is a combination of reviewing the construction plans and then also inspecting the construction plans out in the field. So you're right. Even though we accept the fees for that in the Development Services at the beginning of the process, those fees kind of go for the whole application cycle of that for our public works crew and our engineering crew to inspect while the infrastructure's being put in, as well as signing off and accepting that at the end of the process as well. So, but it is charged at the beginning.
So it's getting collected, okay.
Yeah.
So, because, because I mean, since we lay so much pipe and wastewater, I'm sure our public works goes out to see that.
They do.
So that's, that's time and service.
Absolutely.
So that's getting recouped in the development, I guess?
It is. It's charged at the beginning, but you're right. So it might be charged now, and then the installation of that infrastructure can take, you know, six to nine months, but they're paid at the beginning of that process, and then it goes out. And I do have a proposed fee amendment for that construction inspection that you will see in the next couple of slides.
So development fees capture that, right? Okay.
They do.
Thank you.
And then, as I kind of highlighted, we are looking at kind of reorganizing with Kelly and some of his crew in our code enforcement department to really make sure that we're more responsive to not only those 3-1-1 requests, but also in general, our code enforcement requests and claims. Some other challenges that we continually have in the Development Services Department is really kind of some of our DAs have vested or amended or alleviated some of those fees. So we're constantly looking at a unique case for every application that comes before. It's just a challenge for us to be able to review that. And then even though, and then honestly, highlighted kind of with the previous couple of slides, are some of our plan review times have slowed, especially in the planning department. We're looking at filling that vacant position that we currently have on the books, and we're hoping that that'll help us, you know, meet better turnaround times for that as the complexity of our projects. And then we're continuing to kind of in-house and organize and train and work across the boards with public works, engineering, planning, code, all of our city partners to make sure that we're meeting the goals and intentions of these different. And then supplementally wise, with the success of the Habitat Partnership, we are looking at potentially asking if you'd like to increase that and bring on some more home options for next year. And then challenges, I think this, this next year is really, we're going to be all-in on that code rewrite. That's a huge undertaking for us at the city. It was recommended by our comp plan, kind of looking at, it might potentially require some rezonings of different areas in town to make sure that it's really kind of in line with what the code rewrites and what some state legislature has defined on what is and what is not, changes allowed by code rewrites. So really, this next year, we're really looking at refining and bringing that back to you for implementation. And then, you know, other challenges that we have is, you know, projects are never stagnant. You know, as we evolve, you know, so has our needs and expectations, our continued partnerships with our regional partners when we're looking at the school district in Hayes County and kind of the integration of that, as well as fire integration. You know, so we're constantly evolving and making sure that we're doing good interdepartmental internally, as well as externally with our other government partners. I will say sadly, Development Services did not rank real high on the citizen survey this year, but we're looking at some opportunities to really kind of forecast, you know, some options that we do, both permitting and planning-wise, to show that. And we're also always looking at continuing to try to be better stewards of the development cycle and development process, and see if we can streamline, as well as remove some duplicative steps of that and continue, we're hoping to use some of our software to really kind of bring us to the next level of that as well. So for our supplemental budgets request, kind of when you're looking at where we're at with this, we're looking at upgrading the software. And this is technically a line item in the IT, but it is something that Development Services would be first and foremost on. There will not only be a one-time cost to kind of integrate that system over, but it would be a yearly annual cost for that software as well. So we're looking at that and the supplemental requests. These are some round numbers. We're looking at honing that. I know the city, I have already kind of talked to some different vendors. There's a lot of, there used to be like no one in the kind of inspections permitting portals, but now there's a lot more users in that portal and we're looking at how they would integrate with our open gov as well as our 311 system and different softwares that we have to really kind of bring all that together. Other supplemental requests we're looking for this year is from CDBG HUD compliance support. There's a lot of I's and T's to dot and cross on that money for that grant process. So we are looking at having some contractual services that would help us make sure that we're, keep our eligibility and our requirements for that for this next year. And then we are looking at adding 50,000 to our code enforcement kind of line item that we had for the home repair program. And that isn't a kind of always traditionally have had 20,000 in that for some code enforcement off cases that we had, the line items actually called demo lot clean, you know, but we expanded that and did a pilot program this year, but looking at taking that to the next level and seeing if you'd be supportive of additional home repair for that. So we're hoping with those supplementals as well as kind of our project approach to filling our vacant planning position as well as reorganizing some of the code enforcement that will be more responsive at this next year for that and that will continue to work on updating and refining our development process, hopefully with that new software manual and continue to kind of meet our needs and, and kind of finishing out some of the projects that we've started with this year with the code rewrite and the engineering manual as well as the housing plan and implementation of all the everyday workload as well as continued budget projects that we have for that. So with that, I was going to go ahead and highlight maybe some of the fee adjustments that we're looking at this next year. So I've really looked at kind of looking at where Kyle is at with our benchmark cities and kind of being in line with that. We are looking at revising some of the building fees and planning fees associated with that. So in our budget, so to highlight some of those building fees, we were a little low on kind of the multifamily development fees. So we're looking at updating that per unit fee to go from 10 to $30. And this would be like an example project of 120 apartment building, like what they would play building permit wise would change. It's not a huge adjustment. Honestly, we're kind of in line, but I think there's some opportunities to kind of tweak that. This is new for commercial remodel. We didn't really have a good fee structure or kind of fee schedule outlining for that. So Kelly and his team have really kind of recommended, and this links back with our, our building code, to kind of highlight commercial remodel levels based on the base that are outlined in those building codes and some fees that could be associated with that that would better capture truly what the review as well as the inspection costs are associated with that for building fees. Switching over to fire, we are the permitting authority for our ESD and fire fees. And with that, we allow them the opportunity to kind of tweak their fees since we're the intake for that as well. So these are a couple of fees that they've been proposing that they would like to tweak in our fee schedule that since we're the ones that accept the fees on behalf of our fire partners. And then planning fee wise, again, looking at kind of tweaking those, not huge except for construction inspections, which I'll highlight on the next fees, but really kind of bringing in line more of some of the review and associations going with for easements and then zoning verification letters, just, you know, some applications that we have come in to bring them a little bit more in line. We did a huge overhaul of our budget, our Development Services fee, if you remember last year. So they are pretty in line, but we're continuing to look at and kind of modify for that. We had a tree replacement fee category already in the code, but we have outlined a separate fee for our specimen trees to really kind of be in line with our current code between protected and specimen for that. And then upgraded our newspaper notification fees as well. So this next one is truly construction inspection fee. And I don't know if you remember, but construction inspection fees used to be based on the value of construction. State law said no more, you can't do that anymore cities. You can't base your fees based on how much construction costs are. You need to come up with your own way of assessing and doing those fees. So we adopted something last year. I think cities are a little bit late on how they're looking at benchmarking and doing this, but we are looking at really kind of refining of what some of those inspection fees, what it takes to go out there to do those inspection fee costs and kind of level of review associated with that. So currently in our budget, we look at 2,000 per acre for inspections fees. And again, this would be for construction level inspections and we're looking at raising that to be $3,000 per acre for inspection fees. And again, those would be first construction costs of new subdivision constructions. So it only affects honestly a couple subdivisions right now that we're looking, projecting for next year, but this is a fee that we're looking at raising for next year.
Is there going to be a different fee on commercial?
No, this is both for residential and commercial. So this is, this is water, wastewater, streets, like that type of instruction.
I'm just trying to picture it all because you'll have, you have big development, like developers coming and doing a whole subdivision. You'll have single family, just one person coming and doing one house. And then you've got commercial. So I just thought there'd be a different tier for each one.
There is. This is more like the development level of subdivision. And then when you're coming in with construction of water, putting in the water line pipes, putting in the sewer line pipes, you know, putting the electrical to review, making sure everyone's staying in their lane, you know, for what, how they're building out in that right of way. So this is that level of, of construction and cost for, for public infrastructure. And then TIA's were honestly a new fee that I instituted last year. And again, right now in our code, this is for planned developments, development agreements. So for bigger kind of applications, honestly, we haven't had any one come in for these TIA review fees. So I haven't been able to really kind of forecast what this is. However, I did benchmark to kind of what these fees were related and I am recommending raising these fees to be more in line with what our benchmarks are. And this is our summary, last slide to really kind of showcase where, where we have been actual on 22, 23 on the left-hand side, what our approved budget was for 24, 25, and then what our estimates are, a proposed base, and then again, proposed for, for next year. So you can really kind of see we've, we've come down on some of the contractual services that we've had previously for that.
Looks like you had to say more about the slide, so, but yeah, that's fine.
But so personnel, again, we're not asking for any new positions in this year's, in our proposed next year based on, thank you for bringing those inspectors on, online last year. And then this is kind of showcasing all of the budget numbers that we have for that in the three different departments together.
All right.
So I guess bringing them in-house, you were able to observe like things that could be improved on.
Absolutely.
Building permits, right? When you didn't have them in-house, you missed that because you don't, you're not engaged with it as much.
Absolutely.
Now you see how the, how the, I guess, how it's put together and it's much more, it's much more into the building permit.
Absolutely. And I think Kelly wouldn't even be able to say this, like consistency among interpretations or things that are going out in the field is, is so much better as well, you know, because he's able to kind of bring those inspectors in-house, you know, identifying issues that they're having out in the field as well. And then kind of having a consistent recommendation between them all and just being able to have a level of oversight for all of that too versus you never know when you were doing just the true contractual, you know, who was going to go out that day. I mean, don't get me wrong, we did have, you know, several inspectors that we worked with pretty regularly, but now we're at the level of oversight is tenfold on that.
It's now having a plan and direction as well. And now everybody's on the same page because they work together. So it's definitely a more efficient process. So, good job.
Thank you. I like those improvements. Thank you.
All right, one more to go.
Chief is ready. He's ready.
Chief, you ready, sir?
Actually, I'm going to take this other item out of order. All right, next up, number five, receive report, hold discussion, provide staff feedback regarding overview of the police department proposed budget for fiscal year 25, 26. Chief Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jeff Barnett, chief of police for the record. And you're right, I'm excited about the police department budget. In particular, I'm excited about the good news that you heard just moments ago about our meeting confer. And I have a slide in here, so I'll kind of address it at that point as well. So I want to tell you that the men and women at the Kyle Police Department are working very hard to provide exemplary police services for the community. And we're blessed with a tremendous staff. We have some very hardworking professionals. This particular chart, I wanted to start with our organizational chart to kind of remind the council and the community members the scope and depth of the work that the police department performs for the community. So it's easy to think about the uniformed police officer and perhaps the 911 operator when you call the police department. But this particular slide represents the multifaceted operations that we contain at the police department. We're basically divided into five major operational bureaus with your traditional policing, uniformed officers and your traffic officers out there enforcing the traffic laws and working your accidents. But we have, but we also have a very robust criminal investigation division and we've been professionalizing that unit with additional components. We've added a professional forensic investigative unit this year. So you have your own very scientific forensic experts that go out and process crime scenes now. They have a very high level of training and they continue to learn more every day. We have about 30,000, probably a little over 30,000 pieces of evidence in our evidence room. So you allowed us to hire a specifically focused evidence technician along with those forensic specialists and so that they maintain all that in good order for the court. We have an outstanding mental health unit, thanks to the council's additions to us over the years. The matrix study, you're going to hear me talk a lot about the matrix study because this is year two of implementation of some of the positions that we're requesting. But one of those major impacts of the matrix study was that we needed to improve our mental health services to the community. So we established with your help, a dual team approach where we have two licensed clinicians, mental health experts that are not police officers. And then that unit also has two mental health officers and a supervisor so that we can provide additional coverage throughout the week and into the evening hours for those that may need, may need mental health services. They do a lot of follow-up work. So they do an outstanding job as well. We have a variety of experts that provide budgetary assistance, analytical work for the police department. And certainly our record staff, our telecommunications staff, our animal control staff, all provide very unique services and they're all housed under the police department. More recently, we've added the office of the emergency management responsibilities to the police department as well. And you'll hear me talk about that division. But in general, this just shows you the scope and depth of the work that we do throughout the police department and that we have a variety of divisions. When we look at our growth in the community, you can probably certainly expect some additional calls for service. You'll see on this particular graph and on the, on the next page here, that our calls for service continue to increase as we grow in population and as we provide entertainment and dining locations and additional places for people to stay in our community and enjoy Kyle. Those do lend themselves to additional calls for service. Not particularly always a crime or something where somebody's, where the law has been violated, but people need police services. They get locked out of vehicles. They have lost items. They have children that are lost temporarily, but there's just things where people need police services. And when we create those destination locations, people, people call for our help. But you can see here that we're, we're predicting about 3,500 more calls for service in 2025 than we had in the more recent year. They can, that continues to steadily rise as we increase populations and locations for people to enjoy. This particular slide highlights that we're about a 14, we have about a 14% increase in calls for service, what we would, kind of what we would expect with our growth. But one unique thing that we've placed on the right-hand side in the calls for service over time is those two lines represent that the more officers we have out in the field, the less people actually have to call for police services. And we think that's because they're, A, they're deterring crime. So hopefully the criminals that might want to exit 35 as they pass through looking for a city and an opportunity, that they see more police and they decide that Kyle is not their place to go and commit crime. And then because it allows officers to have more time for initiated activity, the more officers we have out there, we all want them to have time to look for crime and to stop and intervene and prevent crime. And this slide tends to prove that to us. As we have officers out in the field doing their good work, that people tend to not have to call for police themselves. We're either finding it or we're deterring it. When you ask what kind of calls for service do our police officers generally respond to, you can see that we have a variety. Supplements and follow-ups are when people call and ask us to assist them with something in their neighborhood, perhaps, something that didn't particularly generate a full-blown police report where a crime has been violated, but we document all of our activities. So you can see we do a lot of that work. Additionally, you can see that we have a number of accidents and I'll talk about our traffic unit in later slides. But we do have a little over 2,000 accidents here in our community each year and we deploy our traffic unit that I'll mention to try to help reduce those. And then a variety of other types of calls that you see, we respond to alarms, reckless drivers. And then lower, towards the lower end, you'll see that we get into the criminal activity. The assaults and thefts and other such things are really a little bit closer to the bottom, but it represents the, the wide variety of types of calls for service that we have out in the community. When you look for self-initiated activity, what are the officers doing when they're out there on their own? Obviously, you would, you would anticipate that traffic stops are near the top of that. We want them to enforce our traffic laws. When I'm asked by the community or city leadership, what's the number one type of complaint that you receive as a police chief or activity in our community? It's traffic related, traffic and parking related complaints. Not that we don't have other issues, but, but that's the one that people tend to reach out and say, we really need help. We have either people violating the speed laws or not regarding any traffic control devices or illegal parking in our neighborhood. So that tends to be a top priority for our citizenry and you can see that our officers are out there. Another part of that is city council authorized the police department to participate in some step grants. Those are state and federally funded programs that pay police officers with their funds to go out and work overtime hours to enforce the traffic laws. And they're very specific programs and you've been wonderful at allowing us to apply for those funds. And it's not costing our city taxpayers to have extra officers on duty and out there enforcing the traffic laws. Those in turn result to some of those numbers as well. Those have been some great programs for us. On this particular slide, this is one of the ones that I'm really excited about. The national average hovers between nine and 10 minutes response time for an emergency call. This reflects where Kyle PD is responding on average to just under six minutes for what we call a priority one call. So that's an emergency in progress and getting officers to the scene. I think this, this shows you that if you call us in a time of need, that we're going to try to get there in a very timely fashion and you'll have an officer at your doorstep pretty quick so that they can try to intervene and help whatever your situation may be. But I'm really proud of this one right here. And it shows that we have good coverage in our city because we're kind of a wide city if you go east and west and a little bit north and south with our interstate system gets a little busy. But this, this shows you that the officers are getting there quickly.
And probably with the future with our bond dollars and the road projects completed in the future, that'll probably decrease that time as well because we'll have better connectivity throughout the city. Just with marketplace being done here pretty soon, I've seen curbs and gutters going in. So in base, so pretty soon blacktop. But to have that connectivity will probably decrease that number as well, probably.
Absolutely. I think our roadway system that we're improving through your grant-funded or your bond-funded projects are going to absolutely make it easier for all first responding agencies to get to the locations much easier. Absolutely.
So Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a geographic difference in response time? Are there areas that it's harder for our officers to get to quickly now?
Not necessarily. It's just the further away you get from the center of town. Obviously, officers just through their normal travels throughout the day are going to be around the center of town as they traverse back and forth. There's really nothing that we can't get to. You see that this is the average of all calls across the city. You know, our really far outlying areas, we're still getting to those in a timely fashion. We're probably... We're probably about as far as anything from the, from the east right now because some of our southwest development in our, under our non-developed areas, we kind of go out west, southwest a lot, but there's no development there yet. So I really, our longest response time would be 150 east to Highway 21, but our officers are still making it there in good fashion. And I know there's some improvements for that roadway coming in the near, near future as well. You know, officers are, they, they try to get out in the community. When they, when they come on duty, they do a shift briefing, but then they get out into their cars and they go out into the community. So hope, they're, they're, they're spread out amongst the community east and west so that they can respond to the calls. They're not necessarily always responding from the station. It does happen from time to time if they're there completing reports or shift change, but in theory, they're out in the community and they're able to get to these locations quickly.
Do we have any agreements with other communities for services other than just within the Kyle city limits?
Um, not necessarily from a law enforcement standpoint, but we all back each other up and we assist each other on a regular basis if needed.
So we don't have a particular neighborhood that is in the ETJ, say?
Oh, okay. Yeah, correct. So we, we do not provide a first responder responses to our ETJ, but certainly if the sheriff's department receives a call, and this happens a few times each month, they'll get a priority one call, and their deputies may be some distance away, or maybe their backup deputies are some distance away. They may have one deputy close, but not number two and number three that are needed for the dangerous call. So our officers will go out and assist that until they get enough staff there and they help coil the situation. But likewise, if we're busy in the city of Kyle, and this happens several times each year, we're busy on a few major calls, and then we need the assistance of the sheriff's department or the constable's office or others. So I would say it's teamwork amongst all of us, and we certainly try to help each other out. But it's term, in terms of priority responsibility, we're responsible for the city of Kyle and obviously the county's responsible for their part. But we do work very well together.
And then we have a number of agreements for joint task force?
Uh, so we do work on various task forces, yes, ma'am. We have an agreement in place. We don't have anybody assigned to it yet right now with the San Marcos Police Department to work narcotics together. But the lack of having someone assigned full-time to that task force doesn't mean that we don't work together between our detectives and other positions. There's some other opportunities that we have to work, some child internet crimes with the state attorney general's office, and we have some other opportunities to work with our federal partners at Homeland Security and DEA. So we're, I would say it's, it's a partnership. We don't have anybody assigned right now in our current staffing to full-time assignments elsewhere, but they kind of come and go as staffing allows and as those needs arise.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, I was going to say, and the railroad tracks, I don't believe they are, but are they any type of blockade to response calls on either side?
They are on occasion. Our officers are really good about knowing how to get around that in most cases. It's rare that we have all of the crosses, crossings blocked for emergency responders, but we may have to detour and go to another location where the crossing is free. Now that the police department is not necessarily located right here in downtown where the Center Street Crossing was an issue in the past, we're not experiencing that nearly like we did in the early twenties. Yeah. But we do have to detour sometimes. It happens. If you get two, two trains that stop because maybe there's a train wreck several hundred miles from here in another state even, they tend to stop all the trains so that they can deal with that emergency elsewhere. And of course, those trains end up impacting our community. But our officers are really good about that, and then detouring and sharing information with other first responders.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Probably the slide that I'm, I'm maybe second most happy about, the other one was the third I told you about, is this one right here. If you want to kind of measure the success of the police department in terms of its police services, it's this slide right here. People talk about crime rate and where are we, how much crime does Kyle have compared to other cities? You can see that we have some comparables there. I'll really focus on the state and national. We have a very low crime rate in Kyle, which is wonderful for our citizens. I think it's because they're good reporters of suspicious activity, and then I think our patrol officers intervene and, and do a lot of great work to try to deter crime. And then our detectives do a really good job at following up on criminal episodes, and hopefully we're putting criminals in jail. So it's a combination of efforts, but that right there is a huge highlight for where are we in terms of success in regards to crime in the city of Kyle, and that number we're, we're very, very proud of. You can see that we're, our crime rate, which is based on a per thousand residents, is really low.
Hey Chief, what's our crime rate been year on year since, like, going back last two, three years? I mean, are we up or down, or?
Yeah, I would say we're roughly the same. The numbers in each year will have a category that may increase by 15 or 20%, but at the same time, we enjoy success in another category where it drops the same 10 or 15%. So we've been hovering around the 16 to the, you see here, 12% over the last several years.
So then is it safe to say that crime isn't increasing on a yearly basis in Kyle?
In terms of a rate, that is correct. So remember, this is population-based because, because it's based on a per thousand residents. So the numbers may increase, so the number of thefts may increase. If you look year over year, it may be 200 and then 230 and 270, but as a rate, as we grow as a community, it's staying consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I really think a lot of this contributes to by our traffic, our, you know, us investing into our traffic patrol. Look, many of the times I, I, you and I have had this conversation where I believe we just get lucky, right? Because you have people doing things and violating law, trafficking, and then it generates, you know, that surge, whether we have a drug bust or something, and then our detectives can follow up on that and really deter a lot of the thing. But I really think it's our investment into the traffic patrols that have really lowered these numbers, and I, I think as long as we continue to invest in that, we're, we're going to see low numbers here.
You bet. The more that we're able to have officers have time to intervene in the community, the activity that's going on, you're right, the more likely they are to find crime. You're lucky, they're out there, they're working, they're digging, they're trying to find criminal acts and maybe intervene in those, and traffic enforcement is a way to that, yes.
And I don't know if lucky is the word, but sometimes it's, it's being out there, being visible, and being able to really see things in real time, our officers being out there. And I want to say lucky, but really it's, it's, it's being, it's having a plan and seeing that plan being implemented and being able to catch those things, right?
One of the things that the matrix study highlighted, and this is going back about two years ago, is the importance of availability time to police officers to actively patrol. One of the measures is how much time are they spending on a call for service? And a call for service isn't just out in the field, but it's also the police report, perhaps it's an arrest and a booking at the jail. But how long are officers tied to one call before they complete that call? And then how much free time do they have during their shift? Our officers typically work 12-hour shifts on patrol. How much of that 12-hour time do they have to actively look for and intervene in crime? The more we can increase that number and give them that time to go be an active police officer, that's when we see crime rates drop. And that chart that we looked at earlier, we could see the differences, that absolutely reflected that. So in the years to come, as the city continues to grow and as we ask for officers that we're not doing this year, but in the future, it's all tied to giving them enough time to go be an active police officer to keep us safe.
Hey Chief, do you think, would it be possible for you to run some data that would tell us, or that would show us how many calls our mental health unit or just like the community policing model has able, has been able to save us, like, to have sworn officers respond to those same calls in the past when we didn't have?
I do, and I have a slide here in a little bit that'll highlight on, highlight on that just a little bit because we're, now we're able to capture the matrix or the metrics. I'll give you an example. If you, if you look back six years ago, when an officer was dispatched to an assault in progress, and the officer arrived on the scene, and maybe it was a family matter, and they dealt with that family matter, and maybe they made an arrest, maybe they didn't, the data capture was a call for service for an assault in progress, domestic violence. What we didn't capture then, because we didn't have the personnel in place, and I'm very thankful to y'all for giving us the personnel to not only do the work but to capture the data, is there's oftentimes an underlying cause associated with the assault, and sometimes that's mental health related. We didn't capture that secondary piece of information to learn that this assault occurred as a result of or a component of mental health. Now we're capturing that data. So over time, our information is going to get much, much more accurate and better. And we, and we've implemented that. And you'll see a slide on it here in a minute. So in the years to come, you'll be able to tell, how many assault calls did you respond to that had a component of mental health associated with it? It wasn't just a typical true assault by itself, it had mental health components. And then you can ask, because we're tracking, what services did we provide? How do we try to prevent that in the future? And what ongoing services with these clinicians are we providing so that we never have to go back there for an assault because they're getting the treatment and the, the medical and psychological help that they need to prevent that? So great question, and we're getting better at that every day.
Yeah, Chief, I've, I saw that in Tarrant County when we implemented comprehensive programming with mental health and criminal justice and all the police departments. But the major thing that impressed me was the dramatic decrease in injuries, both to officers and to the subject, and in, in custody death. Dramatic increase. It's not huge problems here in Kyle, but as we grow, it can be. But these programs are tremendously impactful.
Absolutely. The additional staffing that you've provided has really helped us hone in on the true needs of the community and slowing down that, that call for service. When officers arrive without mental health training or without mental health experts to be there, they're trying to resolve that situation and move on to the next call because they have more calls holding. When you have experts that are specially trained to deal with that situation, and then they're given the time and the ability to deal with a call in a slower pace, and they have all the options, all the variety of options that are out there. One of the neatest things that our mental health unit is doing, and, and they just really got staffed in the last few months, is they're able to provide direct entry into some of the state's mental health facilities. Without that, most patients or most of those in need end up in a local hospital in the emergency room with an officer sitting there with them for hours, waiting to be evaluated, and then the hospital will help locate a bed, an inpatient facility, which can take hours. Sometimes it takes into the next day, we're 24 hours later, and then we're transporting that person. Doing a, the ability to do direct entry into some of our finest psychiatric hospitals and mental health facilities is reducing an impact on our hospital system and our emergency room, and it's reducing officer time in the transport and the wait. So we're making improvements in all areas with the staffing that you've provided for. So it's been really, really, really wonderful to see that come to fruition, and then to Councilmember Hauser's point, to collect the data that we weren't collecting in the past. It's making strides. I'm going to jump gears here and talk a little bit about our animal control. Again, that's one of our, the variety of services that are operated through the police department. Very busy operation. The more folks that move to town, we see, obviously, they bring more pets, which can sometimes lead to calls for service. Another component that I learned this week in a conversation with our animal shelter partners in San Marcos is that the entire region is seeing an increase in pets that need services of some type. Either they're drop-offs by owner surrenders, or they're, they're loose out in the community. And there's a phenomenon about during COVID, a lot of people adopted, they were really adopting pets because they were at home more, they were working from home, some were at home alone, so they were going out and adopting all these pets. And they're seeing a cyclical response to that now with more puppies, more kittens, more animals, and then sometimes people aren't able to keep up with them. They think the economy has a little bit to do with it. Can you afford a pet? Are you taking proper care? In turn, all that leads to calls for services. You can see we've got about 200, we anticipate 230 more calls for service. But if you look at it since 2021, and then look at it now, we're talking about 1,000, no, yeah, about 1,000 increase in our calls for service for animal control. They really do try hard to get pets returned without taking them to the shelter and getting those right back in their home where they belong, but they're, they're a very busy group, and we don't see that slowing down as population increases. I briefly mentioned accidents and the Councilmember Rizos' point. Our traffic unit is extremely important in interdiction into crime. Also, they're the ones that are responsible for trying to help us reduce accidents throughout our community. Again, the more vehicles we bring to town, the more visitors, the more places we have for people to turn in a, into and out of creates friction points for potential accidents, and we see the numbers are just inching up from 2021 where we had almost 1,800 to this year where we, or last year, I'm sorry, where we had 2,300 accidents in our community. Those traffic units are, are critical to be out in the community, be present, try to slow people down. But I want to show you kind of how busy they are, and the importance of the roadway projects that y'all mentioned are going to help reduce that as well. To Councilmember Hauser's point, we have a slide here where we're beginning to capture some of the data to show you our calls for service and how many calls for service are, services are our mental health officers and clinicians able to respond to. And what that does in turn is it relieves a police officer to go back to their patrol duties, and it puts an expert in the field and gives them an opportunity to deal with that call like we discussed, a little bit slower, perhaps getting them directly admitted into an inpatient facility rather than bouncing through our hospital system and tying up our emergency room staff. And sir, we'll get better at this data because we're just now able to collect it, but these are the types of numbers that we capture, and you'll see that getting better and better. You know, they do follow-up work. Not only do they do responsive work, but part of their job is to call those that are on their list and, and make sure that they're taking their medication. Do they need a ride to the doctor preventatively so that they don't have a, a critical incident where they need emergency services? And we try to keep them on the right track. A lot of people will go to an inpatient service, and they'll get a, a plan established with their, their medical professional. And then at the right time, they'll get released with maybe medication or a plan in place. Our staff members are made aware of those plans, and they, they follow up to make sure that the plan is working and that they're getting the help that they need. Current chart, just to give you an idea, back to the sworn staff, this is kind of how we're allocated right now. Out of the 82 positions that were authorized, we have 74 of those that are staffed that you can see here. We hired 10 new police officers in 2024. Those were, generally, those were positions that were afforded by city council in the last two budgets, and we're continuing to hire. Technically, we only have five vacancies today. You can see down at the bottom, we have 12 cadets. Those are the ones that are going to the police academy. Probationary officers are those that are usually in the field training program, and then they work their way up through a variety of police positions throughout the organization.
Chief, with the five vacancies, are those people in the pipeline, or is that something we still need to fill?
So there's not a name associated with the vacancy. However, we, we're, we're in a constant hiring process, so we did some interview boards last week, we'll do some next week and the next. We, we conducted our most recent police civil service test a few months ago, and we're now working through the backgrounds. So we have dozens of individuals that are in the background process to try to fill those five positions. And we're, we're getting really good numbers. As a matter of fact, at our last test, we had over 100 people sign up to come to work at Kyle PD to be a police officer. And when we talked to our partners in law enforcement in the region, they, they just can't believe those numbers. They're getting 10 people, 12 people interested in, in their testing. So to have 100 people that were initially interested to come to work at Kyle PD, now they're not all necessarily qualified or we're going to hire, but to have that many people show interest and sign up to come be part of our team shows a lot of the good work of our recruiters and our police officers and the support of council and leadership because not every community enjoys that, and I think that's a big selling point for our community.
That's great. Great to hear.
And I think this may fit here with staffing, but with more and more sections of the vibe trail being activated, you know, as we kind of go through this next year, how, have you guys started to formulate a plan of how you will keep the, keep it safe and have officers?
Yes, sir. Great question. So there, there's twofold. I don't want to get ahead of myself on a, on a grant that is being worked on by another city department, but there's a grant that is potentially going to supply some electric vehicles, some electric bicycles that our officers can use on the vibe trail, and we have reinvigorated our bike patrol program. We started it in 2011, and it was predominantly used for parades and special events, and then in the shopping district, anywhere from the Thanksgiving holidays through the Christmas holidays. So they'll be around the, the major shopping centers and occasionally in the neighborhoods. Well, we've reinvigorated that unit, we've got some new bike patrol officers on, on the team, and they will absolutely patrol the vibe trail on a, on a, I'm going to call it a, a, a regular basis, but not fully assigned to it. And then we're looking at some other electric-type vehicles where we can deploy those in those remote locations. And then I think they also have some call boxes that may be in the plans for that too so people can call us. But yes, sir, our bike patrol program is going to incorporate the trail, and we're, we're getting them up and running again.
I think our citizens on patrol are doing patrols on there as well, right?
They do, yes, sir. Yeah, I'm glad you reminded. A tremendous group of citizens on patrol that help us. We just added two more members. So yeah, we keep growing that citizens on patrol program as well.
The call boxes, where are those? When would you possibly budget for those?
Those are through the budgeting, I'm sorry, because it's in a different office. It's through, it was, you may know where they're going to put it, but it was in, Will was the one that was working with us on that.
It's part of the construction funding on the project.
So it won't be out of PD budget?
Not out of the operations. No, sir. Thank you.
So earlier today, you heard a presentation about their strategic plan. And I wanted to just bring up a slide that shows you where do we fit into that picture of your strategic plan that you've been working on. These were the measurables that we were asked to provide feedback for. And you can see that obviously we're producing operational activities to promote safety and order in the community. I think we've heard about our crime rate that tends to point to that, that we're doing a good job at keeping the crime rate low. We've talked about other activities to try to reduce the accident rate of vehicles in the community and other stuff. You're going to hear from me and hear in a few slides to talk about our public engagement opportunities. We want to make some improvements there. But we've tried to do a really good job at engaging with our community, both through social media and through programs and through constant contact with our police officers out in the city. And then you can talk, the last one is, you asked us to make sure that we're recognizing the good work of the men and women that the police department do. And we've implemented a yearly program now where we have Officer of the Year and Staff Members of the Year and we recognize them. But also, we have a committee that recognizes the good work of the men and women throughout the year from within the organization. And then I'll add that Ms. Bradshaw has had a wonderful success at sharing our information and our news and our activities with outside organizations. Just a few weeks ago, we had approximately seven team members at Kyle PD get recognized by the Local 100 Club of Texas, the Austin Chapter, for their great work. And then just a week ago, we had, one of our officers was named the Officer of the Year for ACES International, which is a security and law enforcement group. And they chose Sergeant Guzman as the Officer of the Year, which is a great award. And next Friday, we are going to get recognized by the Texas Department of Veterans for our hiring practices. And this is the second award that we're receiving for our hiring of veterans at Kyle PD. So we'll go to Kerrville next Friday. So when you ask us to promote the good work of the men and women at Kyle PD, we're trying to do that and make sure that they get recognized for their good work, not only internally, which we do, but externally as well.
Yes, sir. I could add to that. That is true. We've been seeing a lot of positive feedback from the social media, from Ms. Bradshaw and all her hard work. I see it all the time. It's, you know, there's, we're recognizing the 100 Club and, you know, saying, thank you, Kyle Police Department, and thanks for sharing this information, especially when it comes to other issues, whether it's fentanyl awareness or the trash, the traffic study data that y'all posted. I think that's something that I remember, we were looking at this position several years ago to get on and have a public information officer. And Ms. Bradshaw's doing a great job on that. We see her on the news. She's giving great reporting on that. There's people, coworkers that I have said, hey, I see you guys are in the news again. You guys are doing this, that, the other. It's great. You guys are promoting your officers in your city, which could relate to the crime rate because there are people out there, the bad boys and girls, the criminals, they watch the news too. They see the social media. So if they see that our Kyle Police Department is really involved in the community and we're showcasing, like you said, and we're putting them on social media, recognizing, number one, it's a great recruiting tool. People say, hey, I'm looking at that. Maybe I might want to go apply over there. But if somebody's trying to look at doing something crazy in our city, they might turn another way and say, hey, look, man, these police officers are everywhere. They're being recognized. Maybe I want to go to another place. So I congratulate you, Ms. Bradshaw, for your hard work on that and for your group and for the rest of the Kyle Police Officers because it's showing that positive impact, that positive feedback that we need, especially when we had, especially with all law enforcement around the country, still having a hard time with recruiting all over the place. It's good to see that we're making those strides to promote our city in a positive light and in support of the city council.
Yes, sir. To highlight one of the neatest things this year, so she created a very purposefully built recruiting website for the police department. We actually, and it is interactive. It's a wonderful site. It's much more engaging than your traditional police type webpage that gives you basic police information. This is a recruiting page. And we actually had a young man from far north United States, I forget which state it was, he came down, where was it?
Minnesota.
Minnesota, way up there. So I met him in the hallway and one of the, because we give tours to potential applicants on a regular basis. Officer Pates brings people through daily to see that new wonderful public safety center, which is a great recruiting tool. And during that, he takes the opportunity to introduce those applicants to staff members, myself included and others. So I asked this young man from Minnesota, what brings you to Texas? Why do you want to move here? Why Kyle PD? What's why, the why? That page, he said, was the best page. He had been looking at agencies across the country and specifically in Texas. And he said, your page had every answer to every question that I wanted to know. And I knew if you spent that time on a page like that to tell me what I wanted to know, that this department was a place that I wanted to come check out. He went to several in the state, had visited us. We had that conversation with him. He went back to Minnesota. He called the recruiter, Officer Pates, and said, Kyle PD is where I'm coming. I'm going to finish my degree. He had, I think about a year left, but when I finish my degree, I'm coming back to Kyle, Texas, and I'm applying there. So you're right, those are recruiting tools as well.
Because you have to look at a whole new mindset of new recruits that are coming in, those that are graduating from college, like my son. I may be old school and just seeing in the paper, but they are more interactive on the web. They are more interactive on social media. So it's reaching out to that audience, that specific audience, to those possible recruits to where you're on their level and having all that information available. It cuts down a lot of time and then it sees the city as a whole, the department, the agency and the opportunities for promotions and everything else. And it really triggers them to where they, it's like to catch them and bring them in. It's good.
And having staff like Ms. Bradshaw and having the time, ability and the knowledge to take care of all that is getting really good recognition for our department and obviously the recruiting is paying off. So yes, sir.
Chief, one of the other things that's really great is our case resolution rate. And I think that when we publicize that, it gets a lot of community interest and impact because it's really good compared to other communities.
And she, her timeliness is super important right now. As she's here today, she's in the back working on an arrest from overnight where one of our officers made a good, significant, a noteworthy drug arrest and had a lot of components to it. And so she's working on a release about that. And to go to your point, sir, when criminals see that, when they see that officers are finding drugs and they're making arrests, maybe they're thinking about Kyle's not the place to do that. So yes.
Especially on the car burglaries. They've broken several rings that were operating in other communities as well, but it's our police department that solved it.
Yes, ma'am. They're doing great work.
You got to understand that these specific types of criminals look at everything, just not neighborhoods, but they look at the website, they look at social media, and that's where they do a lot of their gang recruiting as well.
Yes, sir. You'll see as we go through, I've got about six or seven more slides, but you'll see as we go through there, kind of want to talk about what's the impact of some of the information that we're looking at. You'll see that our total request, when I go through the positions and the equipment and whatnot, will give us an overall budget increase of about 4.6 million, which is about a 22% increase. I want, I do want to highlight that our meeting confer number, I'm very excited about that. I'm happy to hear that our association has voted and passed the contract as it sits now and you'll see that soon as a council. But we got word this morning that that voting has concluded and nearly 90% all in support of that was really good numbers. So, but our budget number here does include that impact, even though this slide doesn't particularly reflect it because the slide was made last week. There's, the portion of that is about 1.2 million, as you've already heard today, and negotiations, I would call it now complete, pending city council and city manager review and council approval of that agreement. To talk about a couple of the personnel, for the most part, most of our personnel positions that we're asking you to consider are matrix related. So you remember, you initiated a matrix study to study operations and staffing levels at the police department and to make recommendations. Most of the positions on here were recommended by that matrix study and then some others are areas where we can see improvement or maybe they've been council requests and I'll go through those very quickly. As you recall, we've moved the Office of the Emergency Management into the Police Department Operations. We have one emergency management coordinator. He does great work and I think we have an outstanding employee in that position, but he's only one person and he can only do the amount of hours that we can give him. So he needs a planner. The planner's purpose will be to enact the emergency management plan. They'll develop comprehensive response plans for practically every location in the community. They'll coordinate with state operations and we'll begin to have training exercises, some with councils opportunity to participate, but for city staff and maybe members of the community so that we're developing response plans to our schools, to our hospitals and other places where we tend to have people congregate. So the planner position is a much needed position and you'll see that we have it ranked fairly highly in our consideration request. The next one is a fleet tech. So we have one fleet manager and we have over 100 vehicles in the police department. That in and of itself is a chore to manage, but our police cars have a tremendous amount of technology from the computers, sirens, radios, all the equipment that's in the back of the vehicles. It's just, it's much more than it sounds at 100 vehicles. It's everything that's included with the vehicles. And what we're asking for is an entry level fleet tech to assist our fleet coordinator in the transport of vehicles, minor repairs, oil changes, tire rotations. We think we can reduce the fleet cost by about 25% if we can bring in a fleet tech. If we don't have the fleet tech and we need multiple people to transport vehicles to and from the upfitters or repair shops, we're having to use police officers. And we're, so we're overpaying for that position to have people transport vehicles in and out. But we can bring in some of those minor repairs with a fleet tech. It's not a shop. These are things that can be done under the awning at the PD. But I think we can reduce costs and certainly try to avoid using police officers to transport vehicles and stuff. Two real time crime center analysts, still part of the matrix study. We implemented the real time crime center in Kyle just a couple of months ago. And I have to tell you, the result is amazing. The amount of work that they're doing in support of the operations at the PD has already solved several crimes, but that's their whole purpose. They're to provide immediate information to responding police officers and detectives so that we can more quickly apprehend criminals, solve crime. And they've had several tremendous success stories already and this is just a continuation of that program recommended by Matrix. And then to grow, we want to provide more hours of the day. We have two staff members there now. If we can add one or two more over the next year or so, we can just expand the number of hours that they're available. But the officers highly appreciate the work that they're doing and they're very proud of that real time crime center. We've had numerous agencies come tour our real time crime center and our emergency operations center because the public safety center is a wonderful facility and others are coming to us to see how you're doing it and how are you staffing it? And it's been a really good positive thing. The next one I want to talk to you a minute about is our community engagement coordinator. So the police department, we conduct over 60 events a year where we're the one setting up the event, we're the one trying to host it. And right now, it's a handful of people that are trying to work it. Ms. Bradshaw does a majority of that work, but it's not particularly her job. But we have other people that try to step in and coordinate really good events. But I think we can do better. We can do more and we can do better. One of the things, one of the areas in which we want to do is we really want to introduce youth-based programs to our operations. We would love to do youth-based academies, youth-based explorer programs, youth-based training opportunities. Years ago, when the police department was much slower in terms of operations, we would do bicycle rodeos in the summertime to increase bicycle safety. I'll remind you that we've had three kids hit on bicycles just this spring alone. So those things still happen and we want to try to increase awareness for bicycle safety, but you name it. We would love to have a police explorer program and continue to engage youth in a positive program that might yield our future police officers, dispatchers, forensic investigators and all of those things. So a community engagement coordinator would not only help us manage that, but all of the bigger events that you're aware of, our National Night Out events, our crime prevention meetings out in the community, we need somebody to go out and really help set those up and make sure that we're ready for success when we get there. And I just think we can make some tremendous improvements with that. But like I say, we're doing about 60 events now. I think we will continue to do those 60, but I think we could add another 20 or 30 good events and some just that have real significant impact in our community. Another thing is we want to make sure that we're providing equitable services all across the community, that we're not just focused in one area because they ask, but that we're providing services in the east side, the west side, in older neighborhoods and in newer neighborhoods. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to really engage the community in a better way with a dedicated person at that position.
Yeah, chief, I agree. And I, one of the things I would really like to see expanding in our department is reaching out to our immigrant population, like through the New American Center. I was surprised at how many refugees, certified refugees that come in through the formal refugee program are living in Kyle, you know, well over 600 from Africa. And they have multiple needs, but one of the needs they identified was how do we work with the police? We're scared of them.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to run, but we know we shouldn't. They don't have good experiences with police or officials in any capacity. So I would, I would love for us to be able to reach out to our immigrant community.
Absolutely. And that one, the one particular group recently, we've scheduled, we conducted a meeting with them. We've agreed to offer some services and time with them. And this is the perfect example. If we have an engagement coordinator that can really facilitate that and make that a really wonderful, positive experience through all the work that they can do, it'll be better than just show up and meet here in the room at the PD and not have a lot of fanfare to it. But a, and a community engagement coordinator can really help us communicate with our citizenry, with the meeting groups and elevate what we're doing now and make it better. I think we can, we can do a lot better at that. It also goes back to the recognition of officers. We try to hold events where we recognize them. Just this week, I got to present that Officer of the Year award to our officer, but we did it at shift briefing. Now, we had 20 people in the room, but I would love to have had a really engaging event where we had city leadership and watched that person get handed their award for getting Officer of the Year for the entire Austin region from ACES, which is incredible. And I think someone who can devote that time and effort and energy into that can really put us to the next level.
Yeah, I think it would have been great, I mean, to be there to see this officer receive that award and, you know, just recognize his hard work and dedication. And, you know, deterring crime, as Councilmember Tobia said, you know, you've got the top cop in the region here in Kyle. It definitely will deter crime. But I really like this community engagement coordinator, working with the schools, especially with the schools, having all the law enforcement classes they're offering now and now partner, they're now partnering with ACC and UT. So it's really expanded to have that expand also through our department because right now, our kids are having to go outside, to outside agencies to have them here in Kyle. It'd be a great recruiting tool as well.
Absolutely, sir. Yes, sir.
Chief, I have to also say, so I've seen a lot of like increase in visibility through the last engagement specialist we had. And so, like you said, if there's 60 events and you could do more, but also reach the neighborhoods or communities that don't necessarily come to you, maybe because of fear of police, but maybe we can show or invite them so that they can understand where, how policing works, to keep them safe.
That's exactly what I want to do, yes.
And they're not necessarily calling you and saying, hey, we'd like to have y'all here, maybe because of fear. So we have to break that, that culture, break that, that cycle. I'd love to give you everything. What, where would this rank in your rankings, in your matrix ranking if, if you can't get everything, chief?
So I have that one.
I see a forensic's need, I see a drug need, I see now a K-9 need. So I'm trying to prioritize like what it is that you, we could really do in this budget.
Great, great question, sir. So I have it ranked in terms of all of our asks, which includes some equipment and personnel. So this list is mixed. I have it ranked as our number five out of our 20 asks.
So is five, is one the greatest need and?
It is, yes, sir. So the number one position that we've ranked at the PD, and like you mentioned, they're all important, they can all do great things. The number one position that we have on there is our emergency planning, our emergency planner for emergency management because the task overwhelms him. He's just never going to get us an emergency plan and have a responsive protocols for the hospital and the school districts unless we get him some help. But number one is the emergency planner. Number two is the fleet technician. Number three, and you haven't heard me talk about this one yet, but I'll get to it on the next slide, is a K-9 police officer. Number four, the real time crime center. And number five is a community engagement specialist. So that shows you about where it's at in the list.
So you're involving sworn and non-sworn as a rank?
All ranked, yes, sir. I have all 20, we have about 20 asks total, which includes equipment and some uniform increases and whatnot. And out of all of those, this position is number five, which to me is really high up there at the top. there at the top.
And, and benchmarking with other cities, this is something other cities have or they're moving to that where we want to close that gap on and have as well?
Not only are we going to have something that I think other cities are trying to do, I think this is going to put us above what other cities are doing. They all want to engage with our community, but you've heard the good work that we're doing with our social media campaign and our information and our data sharing. This is actual event planning to make sure that the events, many of you come to our promotional ceremonies, and it's a wonderful event, but we can do better. We can make that even more special. We can give that an added bonus that when we put that on video and share that on social media, and when cadets see the hiring process and the swearing in ceremony that we do, that'll be very nice. That is also going to be a recruiting tool because they're going to say that they value me and that's where I want to go to work. Because look at the effort they put into my hiring practices, my promotional practices, and then all of the meetings in the community. You know, Ashley's job is really to share the information and to try to help make sure the community is aware. This person is exactly like what you said, let's go get into the community and let's engage them, let's get them to come be part of the PD, or at least let us come into their neighborhood and share information so that they're not scared, they're not afraid of the PD. That's what this position is going to do. So I, I don't think we're catching up. I think we're going to be at the top of the pyramid by adding this position along with Ms. Bradshaw's work. The two hand in hand are going to put us at a level that I don't think others have achieved yet, and I think we'll be doing really good with that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely like hearing that. So I hear complaints from residents sometimes, they say, hey, cars are speeding even with the school bus around, or the noise is here by neighbors. And I'm like, just call the police. But they don't feel, they don't feel like they can make a call. They, they don't feel comfortable. So we need to break that.
We want to fix that.
That, that culture and say, hey, you know, we, we need to have safer, safer communities, safer neighborhoods.
And we want to, we want to make sure that we hit every part of the community. And we want to make sure that we're distributed throughout every single part. And you're talking about the parts that maybe you're a little bit afraid to call or apprehensive. Let's go fix that and let's let this person help set up those wonderful events where that communication can exist.
Sure.
Well, and I think that the coordination with other departments, Grinch Fest is a perfect example of enhancing the community awareness and feeling of community involvement with the police.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's fun and it just makes, I think it elevates Kyle.
It certainly builds relationships with our community and that's what we're looking to do. I'll kind of move on quickly. I know I'm going a little slow here. So the forensics evidence supervisor that was called for in the matrix study, we have that robust unit I described earlier. They're large enough now and it's, it's time that we get them a supervisor. Currently, they report all the way up to a commander and they all independently report to a commander. So they need a singular supervisor so that we can streamline that. And then same for the administrative services, we have a variety of professionals that work at the PD that provide support services. And it's, again, they all, or most of them report directly to the assistant chief. And so that gives him a lot of direct reports. Matter of fact, he's well over the number of direct reports that he should have. So it's time that we give them an intermediary supervisor so that they can report and work with that supervisor about their needs and also lessen the burden on the assistant chief who has too many direct reports. This was also called for in the matrix study. So we're trying to look at year two of a plan. The only two sworn personnel that we've asked for this year, keeping it light, is the, the police K-9 officer and a narcotics sergeant. I'd like to address the K-9 officer first. I have to tell you that earlier in the year, so six months ago, earlier in our budget year, I don't know that I would have ranked the K-9 officer as high as I've, I've ranked it. As I mentioned earlier, it's number three on our list of 20. But I've visited with the officers, I've visited with the supervisors, I've looked at the data within the police department, and it's changed my opinion. I now strongly support the need for a K-9 officer based on the totality of all that research and the input from the officers, and I'll give you some examples as to why. So in the, in 2024, we had 32 foot pursuits, 32 times, 32 calls for service, we had people flee from police officers. Out of those, there were a little over 40 individuals, because sometimes there's multiple people in the car, multiple people on the call. And when our officers are trying to track people down, or I should back up, a police K-9 can do a variety of services. You can have a drug detection dog, you can have a tracking dog, and then you can have a police patrol or some combination of, of all those services that dogs can be trained to perform for police. Specifically speaking about what police officers told me the most, they want to be safer in their job and they want to more quickly apprehend those that flee on, on foot. Many of those foot chases that we had resulted in hours and hours of police services to surround an area. We've called in the helicopter, we've called in drone units, we've called in, tried to call in dogs from other departments, sometimes they're available, sometimes they're not. But they want to be able to more efficiently do their work and they want to be able to do it safely. Having a police K-9 dog that could go out and assist in tracking would help them locate criminals faster, disrupt the neighborhoods for shorter duration, because obviously when your neighborhood is surrounded by police, it's a little alarming and we're looking for the, the suspects. And we think we can do that with, with this K-9. The other component was the narcotics part. So last year, we had over 400 arrests for narcotics in Kyle. Now, what I don't have is the number of times that we called for a K-9 from other agencies to come out and assist, and the answer was no. But imagine the impact we have on our neighbors, Hays County and San Marcos and others, when we call them at midnight or Saturday at noon, their K-9 officers are off and we're asking them to pay overtime, get their officer up out of bed and, and come help us for a few hours and then go back with no, I mean, at their expense and their officer's detriment. We're a city of size where we should probably have a K-9 unit now. In the research, 86% of police agencies that are our size have a police K-9 unit. So we're a little behind the times if you want to just compare us in general to other agencies across the country, and that was a DOJ study. But I want to give you an example of, of some things that have just happened. So a few weeks ago, you may have heard either social media or through a notification from the city that we had a foot pursuit on the east side of town, it was near a school, it was in the, the evening hours, so school was not in session. But a nearby jurisdiction had had a shooting and they were looking for a suspect that had, had shot someone else. They put that individual's information into the license plate system. And when that individual entered into Kyle, the license plate reader system alerted our officers that they had just entered Kyle. So our officers immediately went to that area, located the vehicle, and as soon as he saw the police officers in his vehicle, he fled. We didn't make it far and he wrecked out, but then he got out on foot. And just as it was getting dark, it was the dusk hour, hard to see, he fled across a field, like I say, near one of our schools, and ultimately found a place to hide. Our officers didn't know exactly where he went because he went through the field and they lost sight of him. Three of our officers were injured in that incident that day. One running in the dark stepped into a, a hole in the ground and twisted an ankle. Another one ran through at full speed a barbed wire fence because he didn't see it because it was so dark and you can't see those barbed wire fences. He ran through the fence and then the other one tweaked his back. Now, none of these injuries were super serious and, and not long term injuries, but we had to send three officers to get checked out because that's our protocol. If you get injured in the line of duty, you got to go get checked out and cleared to continue your job. That had just happened and I'm asking the officers, what's important to you? What is the most important thing for you in our budget? What do you want me as your chief to ask for? The sworn staff. Nearly every one of them said at the very top of the list needs to be that police K-9 because we want to be safer. Searching for that guy, he was ultimately hiding in like a lean to barn thing. But had he been armed at the time and decided to shoot one of our officers, it puts him in a bad position. We do a variety of building searches and searches for people throughout the year. K-9 can help them do that safer, there's no doubt about it. Then you can throw in all the, the drug activity that we think we can deter. If we caught 400 people last year without a dog or maybe an occasional help from someone else, I think you'll see a significant increase in that when we get a police K-9 that can detect the odors of, of illegal drugs, cocaine, meth and other things that we're not able to find now. So anyway, great program, I can answer a lot of questions about it now, or if you want me to do the other one, I can do it too. The narcotics sergeant. So council authorized some narcotics investigator positions and we staffed one of those positions so far, but then we had promotions and our narcotics guy did a great job, but he was on a task force. And then he promoted, so now he's a sergeant. So we had to bring him back and do sergeant duties. So we have our narcotic positions, but they don't have a sergeant. Now, city manager and I've talked about the, the really good opportunity, if, if we're able to staff some of these, that maybe we delay the hire date on some of these and delay them later in the year. Maybe they're a mid-year or an early summer hire so that we can get our staffing. I told you, we had five openings. I'd love to fill some of those first and then maybe roll in some of these positions as we promote or move people into narcotics and other divisions. But we have a three person narcotics unit. It's a highly focused division and a unit that needs intense supervision. I think putting a sergeant over them this year, later this year, or if it's a topic for next year, I want you to know that there's a need for that and at some point we're going to need to, to give them the supervision that they need. But those are the only two police officer positions that we're asking for. Questions? Okay.
Yeah, chief.
Yeah, just chief, I was going to talk about the K-9 unit. You know, we, we foresaw this years ago, adding the K-9 unit, we built the public safety center, we have the holding facilities for it as well. So it's something that's been empty, so seeing it move forward is great. I know we could do a lot with technology, but technology only goes so far. So adding this is probably a win for us, but continuing to add the technology as well to help out, you know, drones, everything else that can continue to help us in that direction. But I think a K-9 unit is great. I don't like us borrowing. That's something I don't like. You know, my, my parents always said, don't borrow, right? It's something they deterred. So seeing us having to borrow from other agencies is something that has always affects me. So making sure that we're, do have our own in-house is going to be important for me. As far as the narcotics sergeant, I'm glad to see that finally on there. But one thing I, I would ask is, since we do have a new sheriff, is making sure that we're reaching out to him. I know the drug task force was eliminated by the past administration sheriff, making sure that we make those contacts again and trying to bring that task force back. I think the increase of drug activity happened when the old sheriff did away with the old drug task force. Being able to see that collaboration coming back and being implemented is probably something I'd love to see. So hopefully adding this position and getting more communication out could, could, that could happen, right?
Yes, sir. And our new sheriff is definitely a, a team player and loves to collaborate between agencies. So I, I will certainly bring that up and see if he's got that interest. They had, over the recent years, reassigned some of that focus to a, a rope team, which is kind of going out and getting those aggressive criminals and getting some of the most dangerous people off the street. And I'll see if their staffing now maybe allow some, some work together in our terms of narcotics. Our detectives will do that anyway, but we can enhance that, we can make it better. Absolutely. Because obviously drug dealers don't care about what, what, if their city limits are out. They're selling to the community at large.
I just got to see where the increase of the drugs happened, what, what was the timelines on it? And I keep thinking, you know, more collaboration, you know, more eyes on it, more people talking. I mean, the more you, the departments are working and talking together, the, the bigger impact we can do because now it's not somebody doing something that we're hearing somebody do. This way, everybody knows what everybody's doing and they're collaborating and they're getting a better strategic plan together for the area. So that way we can deter some of that bad activity. It just, it's just a benefit for our residents.
I, I will say that we had a recent meeting with the Drug Enforcement Agency and they were very receptive to working with us. And hearing that we have a unit and that we would have a supervisor in the near future really gave them a good understanding that Kyle is growing, the Kyle PD is taking care of its own, it's, it's establishing its units. And they were very eager to work with us as well, which can bring a variety of resources as well. So we'll continue that collaboration with state, local and federal partners. Yes, sir.
Yes, chief. I think those, these are really, really good additions. I used to kind of have my doubts about the K-9 because I look at the aspect of, you know, the animal cruelty and the human cruelty, but it, I can't deny that I believe that there are more drugs that have been coming into our state, country. Saw the posts of the, you know, people you capture and what they have available to distribute. So my, my thing would be that the dog focus a lot on being a dog sniffing, a drug sniffing dog. You know, if, if that's part of the equation.
Yes.
You know, I'm definitely looser about, you know, being supportive of, of this, that it can go and, because if, if a drug can sniff these drugs, that'll, you know, prevent drug dealers from pushing them on to, to kids or, you know, or just have people, you know, die for no reason.
I think it'll be safer, you're right, for the officers on the scene. And then you're right, it'll make our community safer because the officers know right now that they're missing some drugs in cars, that they just don't have legal probable cause.
Right.
Their instincts can tell them, but we're not there. The drug dog can, can aid in that and then finding them. And when we're there and, and the drugs are there, let's, let's get the expert.
If you can find the evidence, it's going to make the case provable.
Multi-purpose is important, you know, making sure not just drug, but also, you know, search and see, but also, you know, a search. I mean, would be great because, you know, there's people, we've had, I've seen a couple instances lately that somebody goes missing, right? And they just walk off. I mean, people usually, you know, maybe dementia or something plays a key that, so a multi-purpose dog is important, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Now, you are asking for about 22, 20 in the budget. Does that include the dog and the officer as one unit together?
And their vehicle, yes, sir. It's the vehicle, it's a total package program from the officer to the dog to all the equipment to include veterinarian expenses. Food for the dog, kennels, that's a complete package, and that's a one-time expense. Some of those things we'll buy this year and then we won't have that expense next year with the kennels and other things. Some are recurring like the vet bills.
So the dog will have a, a helmet and a vest. What I'm trying to do.
Probably should.
I'm also trying to keep the dog safe.
No, you're right.
That's an officer, you know.
That's exactly right.
Not just be, you know, easy target for someone.
And easy to identify. We want people to know that's a police dog, yes.
Okay. Now, I have to go back to some of the other positions you, you've asked for. I know the, the base salaries are pretty good and, and we want that because we want people to, you know, not just, you know, earn a salary, but have a nice career. Will there be, do you prioritize overtime in those non sworn positions to, like a certain cap? Because what I don't want is if we create a lot of non sworn positions, that that takes your overtime bucket from officers who need it to respond to, you know, accidents or other crimes. So I just want to make sure that there's a balance in that.
Matter of fact, our, our non sworn, they, they rarely get overtime anyway. The only non sworn that typically earns some overtime is our dispatch center because there's a minimum staffing level requirement there. So if you have three dispatchers on and it's Friday night, that's not enough. And if one calls in sick, we're going to replace them with somebody probably on overtime. But our office staff and other office members, if they call in sick, we don't really have to replace many of them for the day. So there's no overtime, there's nobody getting called in. The only other ones that might get called out would be like victim services and whatnot. But they're not, if they're out sick, we don't necessarily have to bring somebody in. Overtime is really, really limited for non sworn staff, except for some people I'm going to talk about on the next slide. There's some potential call out, but I'll talk about that. But yeah, the answer to your question is yes.
That, that's good to hear. Because I, I was getting that question from, from some residents.
Sure.
To make sure that the overtime bucket isn't just put into non sworn.
Correct. And the finance department works really well with us and administrative services and they help us balance that out amongst the organization based on the type of position and what they might anticipate. Yes, sir.
I'll come back on the K-9, but, but right now I, I'm, I'm more open to it.
Okay. Thanks, sir. I'll be happy to answer any questions now or later. So, yes, sir. As I just briefly mentioned, we have a couple of divisions where we do not have people on call, but we could benefit from having people on call. And you'll see three divisions here. In the criminal investigations bureau, you'll see the victim services unit and the forensics investigators. So victim services obviously are the ones that come out in the middle of the night and on the weekends when we've had family violence, assault, deaths and other urgent matters. Our current victim services positions are not on call. We typically just call them and see if they're available and we hope they're available to come out. And when they're not, they're not. It's not incumbent upon them to be available and in town on the weekends when they're not on call. The second one is our forensic investigators. I told you, we just established that. The council gave us those positions. We have scene ready processors. Again, they're just not on call. So what we'd like to do is put one victim services person on call, one forensic investigator on call, so that somebody's readily available to respond. And then you see below that the emergency communications division. I don't think we're going to need someone on call every day at all times, but there are certain weekends and periods throughout the year where we would like some money to put a dispatcher on call and say, hey, this is a really busy weekend and we anticipate there's no room for error here. We can't afford to go below staffing. there's no room for error here. We can't afford to go below staffing." And if we need somebody to come in or we get really busy, like the Fourth of July weekend, Fourth of July is on a Friday this weekend. So that's a busy weekend for us. And if we have people calling sick or need to miss work or call volume exceeds what they can, their capacity, we would like to have someone typically on call during those peak hours to say, "Come in and give us a hand for four or five hours until things quieten down." So we put in a little bit of money for each of those three divisions to receive on-call pay. And what that looks like is they get two hours of pay, straight pay, for a 24-hour period of being on call. So they get two hours of coverage.
And the reason why the on-call difference is because you're now having to stay, you're not able to go out of town. You're, as an employee, you're having to stay near the area in case you get called in. So it's really important for people to know that the reason why there's a pay differential on that is because you're almost confined to your house, right? In a way. So it's why you're having to pay.
We expect a 20-minute response time to end the vehicle to respond and be ready with the right equipment and the right uniform, the right vehicle to go to the scene. Yes, sir.
That's right.
All right, moving along. Basically, this slide just kind of tells you that we're trying to do all of the asks and the things to enhance our services to the community. We think we can do better. Some of these positions are, like the community engagement is designed to make us do a better job for the community. Some are more to keep up with the work, to help us maintain and keep up with the volume of increase. We talked about personnel, didn't talk about equipment much, but I only have one slide. So this is my next to the last slide. So what equipment are we looking for you to consider? Number one, there's a program called Drone as a First Responder. It's a launchable drone, pretty good-sized one, that would automatically launch to designated locations when we have emergencies of the appropriate type. The drone would be placed on the roof of one of our, probably a city-owned building. And when the call for service gets entered by the dispatcher, that's connected to the drone, the drone automatically launches. It flies at 53 miles an hour at 400 feet and will be in most locations in the city of Kyle in about three minutes. So we'll have eyes on the location before the officer ever gets there. Because remember, they're there in about six minutes. Three minutes ahead of that, you'll have a drone that's hovering over the location, providing some type of view to the responding police. We will share information on structure fires with the fire department, car wrecks on the interstate. We'll get a good assessment of what's going on. Our real-time crime center analysts, the ones that are working in there, will also have the ability, because they'll be trained and certified, to take over the drone, because it's gonna fly automatically, to take over the drone and follow maybe a suspect vehicle that's leaving the area of the hit-and-run accident. And they can fly that drone. It will, once it detects that the battery is getting low, it can automatically return to its docking station and it'll do a battery exchange itself in a matter of seconds and relaunch to the location.
Chief, how's that not 20 to 50 times better than a dog?
Number one, it can't sniff drugs. It's not gonna detect drugs.
The compelling story you gave is that, you know, folks, your police officers are worried about their safety running through. And I feel like they're gonna be out there running no matter what, but a drone is just so much better at being able to get to a scene faster. And if someone leaves on foot, you can track them safely and then coordinate and triangulate.
And it'll have FLIR and other stuff to help us see at night. So I agree. The only thing is, unless we have the pilot that will take over. So right now, we have two real-time crime analysts that are typically working from the early morning hours to the dusk hours, because we have two. The drone will only go to the geographic location of where the call is located. As it progresses and moves, the guy, the individual flees three blocks to the east or west or whatever, unless the pilot is on duty, then the drone's not gonna move. It's gonna hover and give you a big overview.
I just, I think about all the operational benefits of having such an operation with someone who's, I mean, every time a call is happening, maybe even multiple drones launching so that when the battery gets low, another one can launch and maintain constant visual presence. That ability to have aerial surveillance of your, of your city in the event of an emergency, to me, is more powerful than, you know, a drug sniffing dog.
So I think maybe they complement each other because the drone will give you the air view. But if they go into a building for building searches, we get the burglar alarm and the burglars inside the warehouse, the drone's not gonna go in the warehouse either. So I think they complement each other. I think they both have their niches. The drone program is amazing. Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to dispel that at all. It is amazing. The fact that it can get there in three minutes, provide live view, and the potential for a pilot to take over is exceptional. It's the new trend. It is the new thing in law enforcement. The dog is just probably has some other unique applications that the drone wouldn't fill.
Well, it's some of the unique applications that I worry about with the K-9 unit, that the drone program doesn't have. To me, the drone program is the way of the future, you know, investing in technology and resources to be able to do that better than other jurisdictions, faster, response time. I mean, literally, there's nothing you could do that could cut a response time in half like this drone that you're talking about, three minutes to anywhere in the city. Frankly, it could probably be faster than that. As, I mean, the moment a call comes in, you've got a major drone going. And it's not just for trying to chase down criminals. Like you don't know what side of, if someone says there's something happening, you can get eyes on so fast. And as you're approaching, you know, the scene, that information can help you know which place to come from. They can already have taken off before you get there and you can reroute around them.
True.
So it's just, it's a lot of, a lot of good reasons to have a program like that, in particular to help with, you know, on, you know, foot chases so that you're not running through fences and stepping in potholes. I mean, you cannot outrun a drone. So, you know.
There's other applications with flood events, large fires, grass fires, things that where we can assist our other emergency responders like the fire department. This application would be used to provide every first responding agency information. So you're right, the drone has a much wider capability.
But if you pull, if you pull someone over and their turn signals, they're not, they don't have, they're not missing blinker fluid and whatnot, you know, like everything is as it's supposed to be. But you said earlier, like you just have this idea that maybe something's not right about, you know, like the time of day they're driving, you don't like something about them. You can pull them over, bring the dog. And if the dog barks, that gives you the ability to search them, right?
Yep. If they're properly trained, yes. Ultimately, yes.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's too much.
It's the blinkers. It's usually the needles that are in the floorboard and it's usually the tinfoil that's rolled up where they probably used meth yesterday. It's those things that probably give them that probable cause or working towards probable cause. It's not.
Yeah, but if you see drug paraphernalia in the vehicle, then that is probable cause in and of itself, right?
Could be.
And what you smell when you open up the window, too.
Right. That's also probable cause.
That's probable cause there. So looking at the drone situation, let's see all that brush out there. You have a murder suspect that crashed out and it went in straight into that brush over there. You're gonna have the officers go in there, you have the drone fly over, you can be able to scope it out, you have the radar to where it has the heat sensory. But at least you have an idea that he's actually right there by the track on the left side by the right pole. So you can actually send the dog in even deeper into the area of exact location. Because the drone's gonna be up so high, it's gonna give the heat sensor where it's at, but it's not gonna give the exact location that he's hiding underneath the water ravine or hiding underneath there. And it can, actually, that's where the dog would come in. I would just go in and be able to find and then have that scent on the ground versus a high above. And as far as the accidents go, how many accidents have we seen that every other day, luckily, thank the full Councilman Robert Rizzo posts on there, "Hey, there's an accident going into Austin in Kyle." At least a drone can be able to see and deter and say, "Hey, look, this is where the accident at." If there's somebody out there that we can reflect that back to social media to say, "Hey, this is how big it is. This is how backed up it is." People can maybe start deterring off and you can, and it could be able to assist fire and it could assist other places, "Hey, this is where the accident's at." So it could be a combination of the drone searching high above, but finding where they get the guy cornered, whoever it is, they can be able to get the K-9 to go in and search in the specific area. Because the officers are gonna say, "It's right by the tree. He's hiding right by the tree." Because I saw an episode on that.
But what's a K-9 gonna do when it finds this suspect, not criminal suspect? What's a K-9 gonna do when it finds that person?
Well, the thing is, it'll deter them there. It'll hold them there at bay or whatever the case may be.
There's a variety of trainings.
I know there's training. But my point is, the answer is attack. So I just, canines are, my dog has great smell. My dog is not a trained dog. I understand there's a difference. But, you know, they have great smell, they have great instincts. Oftentimes, they know the difference between friend and foe, but not always. And, you know, I just, there are a lot of traumatizing situations that I have heard about testimonials from folks that, you know, because this is about my fifth, sixth time chief knows that I don't like the idea philosophically of the K-9 unit. I like some parts of it, but not all the parts.
Well, more likely, the officer will be giving that person commands to stay where you're at, don't fight, whatever. If the person resists or comes after, then yes, apparently it's gonna go to that level. But that's where the training would come in.
What I would say is, just, this is my piece, I'm gonna say this probably just this one time. If I had to choose between the methods of investment, between a K-9 unit and between drone technology, in terms of what, in my view, would be the safest, least-invasive way, and particularly towards disenfranchised and minority folks who would be the drone technology, because it just gets so much of what we're trying to accomplish with helping us in those kind of moments without having the negative side effects of being yet another tool that can be used to be very aggressive in, in sort of police operations. I'm not saying that we would, because I think our PD is a standout PD, I do. But it doesn't guarantee that it's always gonna be that way.
But if you have a suspect that is being aggressive right off the bat, he probably would get bit.
All right. That's the scenario where I'm like, glad we had a dog there.
You're understanding that this is a dangerous person that is resisting, but not everybody.
Guilty.
But that's where the training comes into the play, where the officer would give those commands. And it's not like he's just gonna release the dog just to go and bite him. It has to fall in steps as far as the situation itself. Just having the drone there, yes, would be able to track at exactly where he's at. But when they get him on the ground, you actually would have the K-9 be able to go in there and either apprehend the person or let's take it away from a suspect. We have a missing child. We've had some alerts before where we had people that had been missing. We can be able to track those people, those individuals, if it's a child that's lost.
If that's what the canines were for predominantly.
And they would help in that situation.
I'd want.
Yes, exactly.
But it's just, that's just not the way canines are predominantly used. They're used to assist in finding ways into people's vehicles primarily, and which I, there's a part of that that's good and there's a part of that that's not good. So I just, in particular, I don't like drug dog, being able to pull someone over, have no probable cause to search their vehicle. So you go and get a dog and bring a dog to sniff. And when that dog barks, then you have the freedom to search that person's vehicle. I have a hard time with that, just like I have a hard time with the license plate readers, which ultimately have come. But I wanted to say my piece on the K-9 matter. I, for myself, would rather, if it's a budget year, I'd rather go with a multi-drone or adding an officer who can be there to operate on it. I mean, that would be a constant thing every day. Those drones would get lots of, you know, flight time and we would get faster response times. We just would gain a lot from that without having to put an animal with teeth that, you know, that empowers searching vehicles without, without the use of that dog.
So that's, I think that's part of our job is maybe to share some options with you, options to consider, you know, different tools in the tool chest. Some are technology-based, some are K-9. But hopefully, that's what you see. We're bringing you a full picture of different options to consider and put that all into a budget that works best. So I totally understand, Mary, what you're saying. I'll go super quick. LCR radio consoles, we knew this was coming when we moved into the Public Safety Center. Our call volume and dispatch staffing didn't call for the implement or the installation of two more radio consoles at the time and we knew it. We've grown now, we're growing our staff, we're growing the 911 calls that are coming in. So we gotta add two more radio consoles into the center. The center was built for that purpose. They were, this was planned. It's just the year to get it done. Key Track is our key tracking system. We have to expand it. We have over 100 vehicles and hundreds of facility keys. Those go into a system that's trackable. You can take keys in and out by a computer program and it's time to add to the base. We're out of key spots. The two new motorcycles, those are council-funded already. You've already given us the positions. We think we're gonna be able to staff those positions this year as we can fill those five vacancies. And when we do, we've gotta buy the equipment for the motorcycles. We lease the motorcycles. It's not buying it. It's the lights and the radio and the radar units that go on the motorcycles. This WCC TV tower, you may have seen it at our most recent festival. It was the device sitting in the middle of the field with the flashing blue lights at the top. And it was a camera system that let us have eyes in the sky on the special events. Cameras could rotate, zoom in and out. We could keep an eye on the crowd, see if there was an emergency. We could zoom in on medical emergencies. We would use this not only at special events, but in our shopping centers. It's the kind of thing you see in a shopping center parking lot. It's an elevated camera tower. It can watch for safety and it's a crime deterrent. You put the blue flashing light on it and criminals perhaps want to stay away from that area because they're not sure if the police are there or not. Let's see. I got new vehicle leases on there twice. The first one is for me to tell you that it's new vehicle leases that are for staff that you've given us in the past. So we've got some vehicles that we didn't get last year that we're gonna give to staff. As we go to the other column, there's some replacement leased vehicles as well. We leased some vehicles for three years, some are four and some are five. When we leased them, as an example, some might have been $1,100 a month lease four years ago. Well, the lease has increased and now it's $1,800 a month or $1,900 a month as costs have gone up to lease a vehicle. So there's a, there's some money in here for the replacement vehicles as we rotate those in and out. The Polaris Ranger is a request from the Emergency Management Coordinator. We have one for the Police Department and we use that at all the events, but then he doesn't have anything to use. It's for him and his department to go out and ride through the special events, the fires, the damaged areas and whatnot. So he's put in for that. Two trailers for our firearms and motorcycle units. The new vehicle lease is for the positions that I have in the budget. So some of the positions, the K-9 officer, for example, has a new vehicle associated with it. So that's for me to say, there's also new vehicles that should you fund some of the positions, there's a vehicle built into their package as well. CVE weight scales, that's our traffic unit, our motor units. They also do heavy vehicles, commercial vehicles. They weigh them to make sure they're not too heavy on our city streets. Right now, they only have one set of scales. So when you have a three or four axle truck, you have to pull it up on scales, four axles at a time. They're asking for another set so that they can speed that up or use it at two different locations. If they want to do a two-location operation in the same day, they're asking for some more scales to improve that. And then some uniform increase, just for staffing, as we get them new police uniforms and vests and separate out some of those line items for our cadets. We buy them their uniforms. We need to keep up with those costs to increase, an increase in cost for our uniforms for all the staff, sworn and non-sworn.
And now there's more breathable vests out there for officers.
And we're getting them those, yes.
Making sure we get those. Because I keep thinking about the heat that we're experiencing. We're getting hotter. I mean, every summer gets hotter. I just keep thinking about, you know, somebody passing out from that.
And those have to be replaced every five years. So a vest is only good for a police officer to wear for five years because it deteriorates over time with sweat and whatnot. So, and they're fairly expensive a piece. So as we go through those, we increase staff. We have to provide them for the cadets as well. But you're right, we try to get them the lightest weight that is yet still effective and that suits their needs, their body type. We get them custom fit. They come in and cut them and make them match.
Yeah, I just think as technology is changing, all those vests, making sure that we're updating.
We are, yes, sir.
And making sure we're following that trend of technology. So.
Absolutely.
Chief, a lot of our fleet vehicles are SUVs. Is that just what the department prefers over pickup trucks? I mean, I just see a lot of SUVs and.
It has been, the pickup truck market is obviously, has been lagging behind the SUV-type vehicle. So we do have a number of F-150 pickups in the fleet, but they're not the marked units. We're using them for non-resp, non-emergency response type of assignments for detectives and other positions. But you're right, we can get the Ford Explorer, the Dodge Durango now, is offers a police model, and the Police Tahoe faster. And here's the thing, too, the equipment to go in the vehicle, that market is much bigger. So if we need three, what we call cages, the part where the partition where the inmate sits in the back, we can get those a lot faster because they make more of them because an SUV is the industry standard. You can get them for the Fords, but they're just farther and few between or harder to get ahold of. We're not opposed to it by any means. And we, our fleet manager constantly evaluates the fleet, what's available, what's the cost, what will work, what's a pursuit-rated vehicle, meaning it can go above the speed limit and provide you the traction, the braking, the engine cooling that we need, and the battery system. That's super important.
I think I noticed like some new black chargers. Is that Dodge Chargers?
I don't think we have any black chargers on our fleet.
I saw some new vehicles.
If we do, maybe they're in CID. I don't particularly remember a Charger lately. We've been getting them some Dodge Durangos that they have now. There's a couple of pickups. Yeah, I don't, I don't remember a Charger at the moment. And if I'm missing one, it's for a non-patrol-related duty. We don't have any chargers on patrol. Yeah, we're not opposed to it. We just kind of evaluate the availability, the pricing, what do we have equipment for and all that and try to make the best purchase for the money.
Sure.
Okay. I'll take you to the last slide. This basically summarizes the totality of our ask. Perhaps the line that stands out the most is our personnel line item there that you'll see under expenditures. That does include the meet and confer cost and it includes salary adjustments. But it also includes the totality of all the positions that are asked for. Not necessarily do we, or we completely understand that not all positions will get funded, whether, no matter what position it is. But that's the total ask for the department and that's the significant amount of increase. You see, there's just a couple of capital outlays for the trailers that I mentioned. And then you have the overall impact of the budget at that 4.6 that I mentioned earlier on the slides.
Chief, thank you for the presentation. Great. I'd love to see, two of the things that really stuck out to me were the drone and the K-9. I think both of them would be beneficial. One reason on the drone is that, so the response time is amazing. It'd be great, you know, technology is advancing all the time, but then, you know, technology only takes you so far. It still has that human element as well. So seeing the K-9 officer and the K-9 working together would probably be something I like, especially if you're in a search and rescue situation where, you know, somebody's been out in the cold, it's not gonna have a high heat signature. So making sure that that K-9 can pick up on that would be great. The other thing is, you know, barricades. If somebody walks into a room, you're not gonna find them. I mean, you're gonna, you know, with your drone, you're gonna have to make sure unless you were carrying, every officer has a little body drone. Might be something we can look at later, but right now, and then going into a room, it's an unknown, right? So making sure that we have both aspects is important to me. So seeing how we can budget that would be important and move forward. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I am, sir.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any other business? All right, motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all, everyone, for coming.